Mr. Mason.
A little word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for all the citizens who've gathered here tonight to contribute and to add value to this meeting. As our city council just and city staff just worked through tough issues and there's a declaration in the Book of Change that says that many like wisdom to ask, to ask you, and we're doing that right now, and you give it liberally. We just pray for our leaders and just to bring our city to a sense of oneness and immunity and wisdom and just helps to be slow to speak and equipped to listen tonight. I just thank you for everybody that's in the house tonight, and you really bless this meeting, and that things would go well, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Rappley, will you lead the pledge, please?
Okay, next on will be citizens' comments on non-agenda items. First on the list is Bruce Smiley Taylor.
I'm Bruce Smiley Taylor, 247 Fox on Alany. Good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, I am extremely concerned regarding the overall approach and quite probably the legality of certain items on the agenda this session. It appears that certain members of the council have determined, as reflected by these certain agenda items, that our form of government, as adopted by our citizens, does not bind them to the laws that have been established by the state of Texas and are determined to continue to act contrary to their oath of office. I, along with many, many citizens that I have spoken to and received messages from, find that conduct extremely troubling. I'm quite tired of standing before you with this concern, as I am very sure you are quite tired of me standing here with this concern. However, there appears to be a pattern of conduct which continues to be unacceptable. In seeking a reasonable, understandable, and clearly defined solution to this problem, I would like to encourage you to do the following. I would like to encourage you to place a referendum on the May ballot, allowing the citizens to once again give either reaffirm or reject our current form of city government. If the current form is rejected, it would give the council the authorization to run the day-to-day activities of the city without the continued legal jeopardy that you are risking today by your conduct. On the other hand, if our current form is reaffirmed by our citizens, the current city manager form of government would provide a clear legal path for council members' conduct regarding their obligation to office, law, and our citizens. And the reasonable expectation of everyone would be for the council to follow the law or be removed from office. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next on the list is Sylvia Gonzalez.
Mayor and council people, my name is Sylvia Gonzalez. I live at 103 Wickford Way, and I am here representing the president of the CCPD Committee, Robert Riley, because I'm the vice president, and I have a question for you. I understood that we were to have a joint meeting today with CCPD and the council, and I don't see it on the agenda. See a lot of other stuff, though.
We cannot respond to that, Sylvia. This is citizens on non-agenda items. Thank you, though, for your...
Thank you.
Mr. Rappley, will you get with Ms. Gonzalez and figure out why that didn't happen, if indeed it was supposed to? All right, next on the list is... Next on the list is John Squire.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't have any prepared notes here, but I understand that... Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I understand that Mr. Harada has ran into some difficulties with his staff, i.e., I understand that three of his employees have either been sick or had some other obligations or left the city, and Rick has taken upon himself, like he typically does, to jump in there and work his tail end off. I understand he was actually driving the sanitation truck around the last day or so to help keep our services the way we expect them. And I, for one, applaud Mr. Harada for doing that. The level of commitment that he shows, it should be an example to us all, and so I just want to thank Mr. Harada for the work that he's doing, all the employees for that amount of work they're doing, but I certainly appreciate that, and we need to help encourage that type of commitment from these employees, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Squire. All right. Next on the list is Jennifer Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and neighbors. I'm going to start off by telling you that I have four children, and I would not bring them to this meeting because I was embarrassed. I don't want them to see what goes on in here. I thought I would want to, but I can't. I want them to see...
Excuse me, Jennifer. Could we please put our phones on silent, please? Thank you. Excuse me, Jennifer, for interrupting. Go ahead, ma'am.
I live at 104 Iron Gate Road, and I've lived in the neighborhood for four years. We have four children, like I said. I have personally met five of the six of you seated before me. I don't know if I would be there, would be here tonight, if I didn't have this personal connection with you all. I appreciate the efforts that you have made. I'm here to remind you tonight, though, that as elected officials, you're here to represent me, my family, my children, my husband, and my neighbors. I've been horrified, to be frank, at the political scene that has unfolded since the last election. I have to tell you now that I'm embarrassed to tell my friends that I live in Castle Hills. I cannot in good conscience recommend that they look to move here without adding the caveat that our city government is currently a wreck. I've been to a few meetings in person and watched more online, and I'm reluctant to be involved, to be honest. The negative energy in this room is overwhelming to me. I have yet to see anything productive come to fruition. It is my home now that you all... It is my hope that you all in the council can look past the history and deal with the present. We are here now. Please work with each other and make the city a better place for all of us that live here. There are so many different people that you represent, but I'm not feeling that when I watch you at these meetings. I am concerned about our city services, our police officers, and our fire chief, and our fire department. I hope you'll take that into account as you have these discussions. In addition, I just wanted to add that we have new friends that have built and moved into this neighborhood, and the first thing they said to me when we were talking about their new house was how great the city manager has been to work with. So thank you so much for that, Mr. Rappley, and thank you so much, Council, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Blaine. Next on the list is Robbie Casey.
I'm Robbie Casey, 144 Castle Hills Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I know you're tired of seeing me up here every meeting, and I'm tired of being up here every meeting. And first of all, I want to thank all of you who protect us and watch after us, and for those of you that are in the fire department, you have a lot of children to take care of, too. You know, I said to someone on the council just a few minutes ago, why are we so divided? What is going on that there's so much evil that's sitting up there instead of wanting to support the citizens? That's why you're there. You are where you are at this moment because of the citizens, but you're not representing the citizens. You're power hungry, and that's your agenda. I'm speaking for the citizens and myself, but you have to do something to come together because it's... I'm going to use an adjective. It's getting... It's bad, bad, and batter. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Okay. We're going to move on to the agenda. This is the consent agenda, and we'll start with item A, and I'll read them off, then you can pull whatever you would like to, Council. Approve the previous tabled minutes from the regular meeting June the 12th, 2018. Item two is the Budget Workshop Two. These are the minutes on July 24th. Also, item three is the Budget Workshop Number Two on July 31st, and number four is the Special Meeting on August the 30th. Item B is approve the minutes for the Special Meeting on September the 18th. Approve the financial and special fund reports ending in August the 31st. Is there anyone who would like to... Moretta?
I would like to pull A1.
Okay.
There are too many corrections to be made.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, honestly, I'd like to pull A1, 2, 3, 4, and B, because in going through A1, there were so many factual corrections that I feel like I'm going to have to sit and go and watch every single one of these meetings again, because between Mrs. Scott and I, we were able to identify many factual issues with the meeting minutes, where they incorrectly stated what residents had said during Citizens to be Heard, and the way some of the different items are tallied, I don't believe that they happened in the order that they did, and so I can't approve any of these.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to prove... Like to pull any of the items on the minutes? B, is that what you want? She pulled A1, 2, 3, 4, and B. Leslie, was there a comment on that, or... Okay. Okay, so we'll pull that item. So we've got a... On the consent agenda, A1, 2, 3, 4, also B. Anyone else would like to... Is there a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve A1 through 4, because we've delayed it long enough, and nothing is ever perfect, but it's close enough.
Mr. Mayor...
Is there a... Let me get a second on that, and then you... Is there a second on that?
Second.
Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor?
Question?
Yes, sir. Starting with the very top in the caption of the minutes for that June 12th, 2018 meeting, which was after the election, in the letterhead it has Tim Howell, Mayor; J.R. Trevino, Mayor Pro Tem; Moretta Scott, Place 2; Amy McLenn, Place 3; Frank Paul, Place 4; Douglas Gregory, Place 5. I believe that Mr. McCormick, Ms. Winger, were sitting on council at the time. Mr. Dover's name is spelled wrong. Mr. Mike Flynn's comments in the non-agenda items is completely uncharacteristic of what he actually said that evening.
Could you give me just a second, Ms. McLenn? Mark, we're probably going to go through every one of these, so that's how we're headed down this with the whole consent agenda. Does that fall within the guidelines of what we're here for tonight?
It's been pulled off the consent agenda. It's discussed separately, item by item. The only thing I see on the consent agenda was item C. So, you know, you, having pulled items A1, 2, 3, and 4, and B, allows the council to consider each one of those items separately.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Ms. McLenn.
In addition to that, under resident Carolyn Sanders, she's actually not a resident, the resident is Dr. Staffel, not Stoffel. We refer to people as former council member Frank Paul, but we say, yet we say resident John Squire, who's also a former member of council. We go through a detailed list of all the corrections to the minutes we actually did consider that night, which has never been something we've had in the minutes before. Ms. Winger is referred to as Mayor Pro Tem before we ever even had that discussion and elected her as Mayor Pro Tem. If we go in, there were... The minutes note that Ms. Scott left earlier in the meeting than she really did, and there are just too many factual inconsistencies in these minutes to approve.
Did you want to... There is a motion and a second on the table. Did you want to put amendments to those motions, Ms. McLenn?
Mr. Mayor, I would have to go back and watch the entire tape, and I only got through the first part in Citizens to be Heard. If I remember correctly, that was a three- or four- or five-hour meeting, and if you multiply that by one, two, three meetings, that's, you know, another 15 hours' worth of time, and I haven't had that to go through the minutes to identify all the factual problems. But even in the first part, there are so many things that are factually wrong and mistakes that I don't feel like we can approve them as council.
Mark, we have a motion, and we have a second on the table to approve 1A, B. In other words, 1, 1 through 4. And Ms. McLenn claims that there is mistakes in the minutes all the way through and has given examples. So with that said, should she make amendments to the motion one by one, or should we go ahead and go through with it, and can she file a protest, or what can she do?
Well, she can certainly make a motion to amend the minutes, listing at least the things that she's already identified as needing correction. The rest of the council will have to decide whether they want to... How they want to vote on this motion. You have a motion and a second, so you have something on the table. What can happen if this motion gets adopted is that, upon the request of a council member, at the next meeting, an agenda item can be included to amend the minutes of this meeting, of the meeting, for the minutes that you're talking about. I think it's June 12th, and that would be an opportunity to get the rest of the corrections made. It's certainly an alternative for the council to decide to wait until the next regular meeting, when all of the potential corrections can be identified, and not have to go through this process again and again.
Thank you, Mark. There is a motion, and there is a second on the table. Our paid council has advised us what to do. Do we want to pass the minutes as stated and decide whether or not Ms. McLenn is going to come back with the corrected items? So do we want to move forward?
Move forward.
Okay. Yes, Douglas?
In the past, over the many years I've been here, when there have been corrections in the minutes, they're usually done at the next session, and we've rolled and rolled and rolled these things over and over and over. I would hope that in the future, if there are disagreements with the minutes, that they are corrected at the next session, because now we're looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, five different sessions going all the way back to June. I am willing to give Ms. McLenn one more session to find all the mistakes she finds in A1, 2, 3, and 4, and B, and at that time make all the corrections that she sees forth. But hereafter, we have got to, we have got to, on a timely basis, correct the minutes while they're fresh in our memory, not just having to go back to look at the tape and view it for interpretation. I think I may have a motion for next month to that effect, but I am... What Mrs. McLenn has pointed out to me are non-substantial former city council member John Squire versus former city... However, they're there, and they're substantial in her mind. So I would be willing to wait for next month if Mrs. McLenn, or whomever else has a problem with these minutes, comes fortified at the next meeting with every single thing they disagree with, and that we put it at the end of the agenda, or else we'll be here till 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, going over minutes that are a half a year old.
Do you want to do an amendment to the motion?
I would like to move that we... That all the objected to amendments, Consent Agenda A1 through 4, and B, be brought forth next month. In total, anybody who has any objections to be presented then. If no objections, they will be approved upon.
Do we have a second to that amendment to the motion?
I'll second.
Does the vote on the amendment to the motion, excuse me?
I want to discuss it. The city secretary went to the trouble of sending all of us copies by email so that we could correct the minutes, and I spent quite a bit of time sending in my corrections, and it's just tedious for the citizenry not to have these minutes and to hear at every single meeting that Ms. McLenn has to look at the entire tape. Nobody is ever going to have time to do that. She can correct the things that she wants to correct, just the way I did and anybody else did, and to keep putting this off is just onerous to the citizenry as well as to us. We don't have a record, and there's nothing that's serious. As I said, nothing is ever perfect, but I can tell you that when I was on council before, it didn't matter that I had any objections. They were passed anyway. We need to pass these minutes.
Ms. Winger, I'd like to point out that, because I was the mayor when you were on council before. If you remember, if you go back to the meetings, there were your set of minutes, and there were other set of minutes that got passed. I'm not sure how legal that was or what we did, but there were two sets of minutes. And one thing I do know, that when I look through these minutes and I take a look at some of the comments, like Mr. Michael Flynn made and others, I believe I'm in a different meeting. I don't know who is... I have always been of the favor, and I haven't talked to our previous paid council. I've always been in the favor of actually approving the thumb drive that holds the whole minutes in there and with the... And the whole meeting, and that way, if the citizenry wants to look at it, they can actually go through and watch the meeting. I have never been in favor of a paper approved or an editing process by the city secretary. So with that said... Ms. McLenn?
I did have some discussion on this. I, too, agree that the minutes need to be approved, that they should be approved at the next meeting. The problem with the minutes that we have been receiving is that they are weeks, if not months, behind in getting them, and by that point, your notes can only help you so far, and when you notice some factual problems, then it makes you question the veracity of the entire set of minutes. And so I agree. We need to... I would love to have the minutes within 48 hours of a meeting so that I can look at them when it's fresh in my mind, and I would love for us to get onto a process where our meeting minutes are adopted at the very next meeting, and we don't ever shove them off. I am not shirking my duty. I look at these, but when I've noticed so many problems that I have to go back to the tape over and over and over and over and over again, I wonder if I have been at a different meeting than the minutes are for.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say that these are not being delayed. We have gotten these minutes, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we just add on new ones as the new ones come on. So it's not that the meetings... That the minutes have been delayed, it's that council has delayed voting for them.
That is not true.
It seems to me that these minutes have been available in the past. We've had them at previous meetings. They've been timely presented, it seems to me, by the city secretary. If it's the case, and I think it is, that the city secretary has provided everybody email copies of these things before they're presented for approval at the council meetings, and it seems to me incumbent on us to look at them, at least give some service to the idea that we're going to do decent minutes and get the corrections made before they come before council for approval. Now, this set of minutes is June 12th. It looks to me like that's, let's see, June, July, August, September. It's October now, so that's at least almost three and a half months. I think it's time for us to get on with it, and if we do need to make corrections, I think that we need to make them before they come before council for correction. It's correct, Mr. Mayor, that we do have a tape of this thing, and we could conceivably use the tape as the minutes. That may not be as convenient to everybody as the summary that's in the written minutes, but it is there, and we can go back to that and confirm the content of the written minutes, which is what we're going to do anyway. So I think it's appropriate that we move on with the minutes that we have before us. If Ms. McLenn wants to entertain an amendment, my amendment would be, let's accept Ms. McLenn's corrections as an amendment to the minutes, and go ahead and pass the minutes.
I have a question now. Mark, is it appropriate to ask the city secretary a question in open session?
Yes, sir.
When was the last time that you were asked to change any minutes that are on this particular agenda?
Mayor, after the meeting, I go ahead and do contact council members and invite any updates or revisions that they may have, and I only get a few responses. I don't get responses from other councils.
Did you receive any corrections this past week from anyone up here on council?
I received, not this past week, for this agenda, last week.
Well, it seems to me they keep changing, so go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I did not receive any email from the city secretary before the packet went out on Friday with these. Now, granted, June 12th is a set of minutes that we've had before us before, and I will admit that. The other ones are new ones that we are considering, but I have not... If I had an email with the minutes from tonight's meeting tomorrow or Thursday, it would be very easy to go through and send off corrections so that they could come out in the packet clean. Waiting until the packets come out, three days before a council meeting, you're never going to have the corrections in front of council at the meeting unless we get something at the dais on the day of.
Mr. Rappley, I would task you to please, no matter what council does up here, is to make sure that we have some form of minutes. We have never had this problem in the past where minutes are so far behind, and I would task you to find out what we can do to get the minutes back in order like we were two years ago. Yes, sir?
Of course. Mr. Snoll, my motion was basically to delay this until next session for Mrs. McLenn to bring forth her corrections. Does passing the minutes and the next session, somebody bring forth amendments to the minutes we had passed, have the same effect?
Mr. Gregory, there's a lot to be said for getting it right the first time. I think, yes, if the council were to adopt, for example, the minutes of the June 12 meeting as presented to the council at tonight's meeting, and then at the next meeting, Ms. McLenn makes a motion to amend them, ultimately, in time, the record can be corrected, but during the period of time between tonight's meeting and the November 13 meeting, you will have knowingly passed minutes that needed corrections. Ms. McLenn has put on the record tonight... Ms. McLean has put on the record tonight a half a dozen or more things that she felt were appropriate for correction. So y'all just need to take that into account.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, where we stand is we have a amendment on the, uh, table.
Can I make another comment, please?
Excuse me?
I'd like to make another comment because
You can make a comment.
Because we keep acting as though somehow the minutes have been delayed coming to us. They have not. I corrected, I have not looked at what happened. I sent in my corrections. I assume they were included for the June twelfth meeting a couple of months ago. Um, three weeks ago, at least, after the last meeting, the last regular meeting, the city secretary sent to all of us, everybody's name was on the email, all of the minutes that are included here, including June twelfth again. I did nothing June twelfth because I had already corrected it previously. I didn't look at it again. I'm assuming it's correct. But I went through and corrected and sent them to her after the last meeting, within days after the last meeting. Everybody received them. So unless somebody's email's not working, and these are city emails for everybody else, I'm getting them on my personal email. And I sent them in. I don't know what the problem is, but if people can't do the work in time, that's not the city secretary's fault.
Uh, city email has been down for how long, Amy? Until Rob got yours repaired, was it two or three weeks?
It's working on my computer now.
Well, was it working last week?
Well, it came three weeks.
Well, it didn't come through hers.
No, it wasn't, I could not work on the email on my computer up until, I don't remember what day it was, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, when Rob fixed it.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second on the table to table this to the next meeting. Do we have to vote on the amendment that's on the table, please, ma'am? You can't do that in the middle of an amendment. It doesn't matter, you can't do that. We have a motion and we have, we an amendment on the table by Mr. Gregory, seconded by Ms. McLean to table this until the next meeting?
No, sir, there's a little more than that. To break, table it until the next meeting, but at that time, anybody who has any corrections and changes with any of these things that have been pulled, that will be the last and final time to present your corrections.
Mark, can we do that based on the fact that what if the city secretary can't get those meetings done within, uh, the appropriate time for the next meeting? You've actually passed a law that says that it has to be done by the next meeting. So do we find her in contempt? You're passing a law that basically says that the minutes have to be done after the meeting and tabled and ready for the next meeting.
The city secretary has done her job. This is now up to the council to do the corrections.
We're not talking about that, Leslie. We're talking about the amendment on the table, which he just made, that everything up to the point will be wiped off and assumed that it's right. So is that the way it's going to be from this time forward? And if the city secretary doesn't get it done, will she be in contempt of the law?
Mayor, let's take the word contempt out of this discussion. The, the reality is, if Mr. Gregory's motion, which I do not strictly determine is a motion on the table, because if I had determined it was a motion to table, I would have told you there's no discussion on a motion to table. I construed it as more than that, as Mr. Gregory characterized it, because it went beyond tabling. It also included an, a, a, a form of action to help move this item forward at the next meeting. If Mr. Gregory's amendment is adopted, and then if the main motion as amended is adopted, this question of consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting on June twelfth, two thousand eighteen is to be placed on the agenda for the November thirteen council meeting toward the end of the agenda. When that item is heard by this council on November thirteen, if those assumptions and passages occur, then appropriate action can be taken. And that appropriate action can include adopt the minutes as, as presented. It can be to kick this down the road again till the December meeting. It can be something else. Um, I don't think that there's, you know, any question here about, um, the, the procedural aspects that we're dealing with. Let's simply, the, the council simply has in front of it now an opportunity to, uh, have further corrections as needed be made to the minutes of the June twelve meeting and present it as a complete package, final form on the, at the November thirteen council meeting for consideration. If they're not ready at that point, someone can make a motion to postpone that action until December. Um, I said at the last, uh, regular meeting in September that it is unusual for a city council set of minutes to be delayed this long and being adopted. That statement stands, but if there are corrections that need to be made, it makes sense to make them. And make them before you adopt a set of minutes that, on the record, the council, the governing body has been told have inaccurate statements in it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Gregory, seconded by Ms. McLean. All in favor of that motion? All against? Four to one. Thank you, council, let's move on.
Mayor.
We have number C now?
Mayor.
Yes. C, B was included in the motion.
Mayor. That was an amendment to the main motion.
Correct.
The appropriate thing to do now is to vote on the main motion as amended by the action that the council just took on the four to one vote. So before you go to A two, let's complete A one. So you need a vote on the main motion under A one, which has been replaced by Mr. Mr. Gregory's motion.
Some of I don't understand that at all.
We voted on the amendment, Mr. Mayor, and so we need to go back.
The amendment, I, excuse me, go ahead.
The, the amendment, as I understood it, was to table that with, with contingencies. And now, Mr. Mr. Schnall seems to be saying we need to go back and vote on the original motion to, to approve the, the minutes, which we're not going to do anyway because they've been tabled.
No, Mr. Mr. McCormick, my, my recommendation is that after a main motion has been amended, the main motion needs to be voted on as worded by the amendment. So in this case, the amendment virtually replaces the main motion. It still needs to be acted on as a main motion. The only thing the council's adopted right now is an amendment to the main motion. Now for the council to adopt the main motion as amended. So I would ask the mayor, call that question.
Thank you. So we're voting on the actual motion as amended.
And you have a motion?
Minnie, can you read back what we're voting on, please?
The original motion was to approve the minutes for, um, A one through four by Ms. Winger and Mr. McCormick.
That, that was originally the motion. That motion has been amended to be worded as Mr. Gregory's motion has stated. And it's a simple administrative act by the council to now adopt the main motion as amended.
Okay, so what we're voting on is adoption of the main motion by the amendment that Mr. Gregory put forward. All in favor? Four, all against? One, four to one. How's that, Mark? Thank you.
And do we, do we still need to move on item C?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
A move, we, we approve the minutes in item C.
All in, uh, is there any discussion on item C? No, he said, uh, on the, uh, I wa, I think what he meant is approve the, a financial
Special funds, I mean.
Special fund report ending on August thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Is that correct?
Got carried away. Meant special funds, I said minutes, I apologize.
Thank you, no problem. Uh, Douglas, you still second that under the prescribed, what was just said?
I do, I hope everybody really reads this because this is a reasonably good discussion. This particular item, it's a reasonably good discussion.
Okay.
And, uh, I think
Since we're in discussion, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just saying, I hope everybody's read it because I think it's a very good discussion.
Ms. Winger or anyone else on council, did you have any discussion on item C on Mr. McCormick's motion? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, council, that was unanimous. Okay.
Mayor, just quickly on the previous, uh, we, I will sit down, um, with our city secretary and we'll put a deadline and send out those minutes for council's review. And we get the back, to get them back, we'll collectively look at them and ensure they're, uh, appropriately correct for November thirteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley, I sure would appreciate it, it's getting old real fast. Okay, let's go on to the public hearing. It is now seven fourteen. And conduct a public hearing on the Architectural Review Committee's recommendation to approve an application submitted by David Lewis, agent for property owners Jeff and Tracy Garvins for tree removal for the construction of a single-family residence on the undeveloped lot located at one oh seven Hibiscus Lane. Legal description CB five seven seven eight Woods West of West Lot one A. We are now at seven fourteen and a half. And so, uh, we are opening up the discussion. And Mr. Daggett, I believe you're on here to, uh, speak, if you would like to, regarding this. Or, um, we have the public signed up. Matt, could you come up here, please? I'm sorry. Now, I can't hear you. Sorry, Matt. Yes, ma'am, I have you there. Is your husband signed up too? I, I, there's a little scribble here, I'm not sure. Okay. Matt, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you back there and
Uh, Jack Joyce couldn't be here tonight, so
Okay.
I came to represent A R C.
Okay.
If y'all have any questions for, um, for the, about the A R C meeting the other night.
Okay. Does council have a, since this is a, um, actually a public hearing, uh, what was your recommendation? And then we'll let the
We recommend to approve the, to remove the trees as listed.
Okay.
Felt they were conservative as they could be.
Thank you, Matt. Did, Mark, do we ask, uh, the questions that are going to be asked by council go to the person or the chair of the A R C? Because this is a public hearing.
During a public hearing, so the council should listen to comments from the public. If there are questions raised, whoever's the most appropriate person should be asked to respond. That may be the representative from the A R C, it might be the representative for the property owner, or it might be the property owner themselves.
So with the council saying that, Matt, we have a seat on the front row and let's let the public speak and then council can do their, after that. Okay? Uh, on item number one, we have, uh, Van, uh, Jane Garcia. Ms. Garcia, will you, will you, uh, tell us your name and address, please?
Oh, yes, it's Ms. Garcia. No, it's Jane Garcia, one 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 Hibiscus Lane. First of all, good evening. This is my first time in front of the new council and the new city mayor. So, good evening. Mostly I'm here so I can learn and better understand how the preservation of trees on residential lots actually works in this city. Once a property owner, like tonight, the Garvins receives permission from city council to either cut down certain trees or designate, designate the ones to remain. So for example, um, we were there, I was at the ARC committee, and I know the property owners are putting forth this list of trees to be cut and trees remain. So I'm assuming once this is approved or not approved, the exact trees by tree number, every single tree has a tree number, will either stay or be cut down. But I want to explain some history as to why I want to learn about tree removal. Uh, my husband and I live at one eleven, as I mentioned, next door to one oh three and one oh five Hibiscus, both recently developed residential lots, now complete. Best we know, um, so this, uh, this property owner's been to ARC and they have a, an extensive list of trees to be cut down and also to remain. Um, best we know, there was never a preliminary meeting for tree removal for either of the other properties, one or, one oh three or one oh five. At least we never got notification. We did attend the city meetings where tree removal was included in the overall presentation of the home projects. So they showed their house plans and, and trees on those, um, plans. In those meetings, both one oh three and one oh five were only going to remove a, a few trees. This, this lot's different, which sounded great to everyone. Uh, we recall from one meeting that one oh five said they were going to take down three trees. I think it was on the flag lot side of the house. Uh, and that was our understanding of tree removal for that new construction. Pardon me. However, during construction, and more than once, my husband and I personally saw workers on one oh five cutting down oak trees with chainsaws. We know there were oaks because we could see the sizes of the trees, we saw them cutting them down, and, and the sizes of the trunks as they were being cut and uprooted out of the ground. Some trees were cut up and piled for firewood, some were hauled away same day. The wood pile remained on the property. When we heard and watched chainsaws buzzing away early in the morning, we were wondering, what is going on? These workers are cutting down trees. This is Castle Hills. You know, we don't do that. So we called both the mayor and the city to inquire. They said they'd look into it. Since we still didn't have any answers, we were curious, uh, why the, you know, we hadn't heard anything about tree removal and trees were coming down. So we invited one of our city council members to come over and see what we were talking about. We showed them areas where the trees were gone, based on the original tree map. We still have the original tree map from the PUD where every single tree on that five acres was tagged. Uh, so you can identify every single tree on those five acres. Um, so our city council member on our behalf went to the city to inquire. Uh, we appreciated his interest. After his trip to the city, he reported back that he was told that once someone starts building, they can take, take down as many trees as they want. In other words, once building begins, the land is now considered developed versus undeveloped. Not lived in, not really developed, but we were told by the city that the land was now considered developed, which was a huge surprise to us. So this is, this is really in general, while we're talking about trees and another lot that's going to go through this, you know, this is what I'd like to learn about. As would a lot, you know, a lot of our neighbors who are shocked to hear this story, many, many neighbors were shocked to hear this story. Um, so at some point, I'd like to learn what the exact rules are regarding trees during construction. And if property owners can take down as many trees as they want, once they start to develop the property, if the city considers it developed once the first shovel is turned, then, then why are we here, uh, talking about trees to be cut down and trees to remain? Or why do people go in front of the ARC commission and get approval one way or the other about tree removal and tree preservation? So anyhow, you know, because we've seen it with our own eyes, I really appreciate any clarification you can provide. Uh, maybe things have changed in our city and we're just not aware. So, but it's, you know, disturbing just to see random trees be cut down all during construction. And then I had just a few items about one oh seven in particular, if I have time, about the proposal for one oh seven. I have a couple of items related to the one oh seven property, the trees on that. It does. Um, so just a couple of things. I know, uh, the property owners, or David, posted, uh, a packet, uh, a while back, and then they updated the packet on October one. Um, and there were just some small changes, some trees were missing, um, some trees were still there. But I see, um, and David can maybe explain this on the updated list of October one, there were thirteen trees that were added to the list, um, that weren't on the original list. I mean, they're remaining, but they're, they were added, so maybe they, I don't know why they were added at the end. And then there's some tree numbers, uh, I have the numbers, but they're, they're not on the list, one way or the other, to be either removed or stay. But, but most importantly, I, I, you know, I just want to, I'm trying to figure out, once you make a determine on, determination on the trees, you know, for this new property, one oh seven, you know, what's going to be cut down, what's going to stay? You know, does someone mark all the trees, either to stay or be removed? Right now, the whole property has, um, pink ribbons on it. Um, you know, who actually goes around tree to tree to tree? I mean, there's a lot of trees on this lot. Does somebody go around and individually mark all the trees and make it perfectly clear that the ones to stay are going to stay? Um, I'm sure by the time the workers get there with their, you know, rigmarole, you know, they don't know if it's not done properly. And is there anybody that will actually supervise the city or somebody that will, you know, make sure that the right trees get taken down and the right trees stay? Um, I, I, I'm just kind of curious what the oversight on this is. At the ARC meeting last week, one of the members asked how the builder's going to protect the remaining trees during construction. He said that that was popular up in Austin. And, um, I've been trying to read through the Muni code and I'm finding some of the code applies to single-family homes, some not. Um, I was looking at one Muni code section. It talked about how to, you know, protect the I was looking at one MUNI code section. It talked about how to, you know, protect the trees, how to put a net around the base and protect the remaining trees, but I'm not sure if that applies to residential. But, you know, I'm just curious how the builder's going to protect the remaining trees during construction so someone can't come in and randomly cut them down if they're in the way of something or other. There was no tree protection at all during construction on 103 and 105. They were just open lots and trees came down. So, I'm just not really clear how the city functions with tree preservation. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And Mr. Rapley, so we don't get too far off on this agenda item, will you make sure that you get in touch with Van and Jane Garcia? And make sure that Louis is involved and we follow up on our process and our policy on how we follow up on the tree removal, especially the heritage trees and what is in city ordinance at this time? Thank you.
Will do, Mayor.
Thank you. There's somebody else. Let's see, who else? Kevin Capetta? Capet, yes, sir. Sorry. Didn't mean to budge your name. Sorry, Kevin. Go ahead.
I'm Kevin Canep. I'm at 210 Hibiscus. And what I wanted to talk about is relative to this property that's going to be developed. I've noticed, watching the other two lots that were developed, plus a lot next to me, which was cut up into 212A, that the city either needs to get the supervisors or the contractors to watch what's going on. Because when we remove the trees or do any kind of work, sometimes they're haphazard, just like what Mrs., the lady ahead of me was saying. And I want to make sure that, and I'm speaking now because I've been watching in the neighborhood what's been going on. I walk the neighborhood all the time and see stuff all the time. I see no one watching these people when trees are removed at all, most of the time. Most of the workers could care less. And then when anything is done on the lot, dirt is piled up and when we have a major rainstorm, a lot of times, there hasn't been any protective measure. Because once you remove these trees and you go in there with bulldozers, you're going to disturb the land. And when you have a rain, like we had back in early September, or a rain like we had just today, water will run off and cause erosion. And it just causes problems. So, what I'm asking is, will there be people that will make the supervisors watching these workers for the future construction of this building or lot and the removal of the trees? Also, the developer that oversees it, will there be someone that can make sure that they watch this very carefully to make sure what they're going to remove, what they're not supposed to remove, what they leave behind in trash, or how they disturb the land and cause runoff? Because I can tell you right now, down there by me, when they did the work at the house, it was an accident of nature, but when they piled up a bunch of dirt to have it worked on, we had that major rain. So, I'm asking, maybe some hay bills ought to be put out or some retention area like you see along the highway when we do construction. And I want, that's the reason I'm bringing this up, is I've seen enough going on, those two lots and the lot next to me, that I want to make sure any further development in the area, that people, maybe, there's, maybe there's some in the ordinance to get people to put some kind of retaining area or to watch what they're doing. And I really say this again, oak trees are very valuable. I understand private property to me is very important. So, if I want to do something to improve my property or to sell it and make money, or I put a house there, a family there, I'm not against that. But when you, make sure you're going to remove trees, make sure the workers that are there don't do something haphazard. Because they're just there to make a living and they don't care. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Rapley, will you make sure that you also get with Kevin, make sure that we reiterate our policy and make sure that, most of all, that it's being followed with what the ordinance of the city do. So, let's go back to, is there any other citizens that would like to speak at this time that aren't signed up? This is a public hearing. Wait, oh, David? David, would you like to come up, please? Tell us who you are. I know who you are, but...
My name's David Lewis. I reside at 212 Hibiscus. Have gone to elementary school, Castle Hills Elementary with this guy right here, who he says I stole his girlfriend. It's not true, case in...
He did steal my first girlfriend. Go ahead.
But, you know, is, to just talk about some of the trees that were taken out, possibly outside of the scope. I'm always there for any tree that I know of that's being taken out. And I do watch my jobs. I don't stay there 24/7 because I have other jobs. But at 105, she may have, you may have got mixed up 103 because 103 is the, the flag lot and 105 is not the flag lot. But we save trees. I mean, I had opportunity to save a tree or two that were on the list to be removed. It cost me about $250 a tree to take one out. So, whether I love trees or not, I love money. So, I don't want to take trees out. The other thing is, is that the house in front of mine, the eight-inch rain that we had, I just put topsoil and lost about $1,000 in topsoil. Part of that's because of the drainage that comes down. So, anything that hits my driveway goes on down and floods the people down below because I'm at, Kevin and I are at the end of the street for drainage. And so, I'm very cognizant of drainage on any houses that I build. But the, on, on the trees, I will do anything that is a rule or ordinance. I don't know that I'll go as far as what Austin does. And, and I've talked to my clients about what we could do to save trees that are in, you know, danger. And I don't know of any tree at 212A Hibiscus that I lost because of any danger. In fact, there was a subcontractor was trying to take a tree out and I stopped him. And, and, you know, that is, if the concrete truck was going to knock the thing down, I made him take a different route. So, anyway. I do what I can as a builder. On, on this particular property, if you look, I, I gave you an amended, eight pages or six pages. And, and if you look at it, this, this lot's blessed with lots of trees. And if you look at the coverage, the aerial, there's no place on this lot you can put a house without cutting trees down. The list that I have, there may be a tree or something that I have misplaced or put somewhere else. But I will say that the 10 or 11 trees that I added to the save list is because I just accidentally deleted them on the very first list that I did. They're at the back of the lot and there were trees that I'm saving, not trees that I'm taking out. So, I did put them on this list to show that there's more trees remaining. I have a before and after picture, drawing of the, of the house on the lot. So, if you look at the, the first site plan, it should show the house with the trees. All of them. And the second site plan shows the house with what trees I have to take out. And unfortunately for this particular lot, there's a clump of trees right dead center in the middle of it that are probably within six inches of each other. And it's a lot of trees, not a big area. It's probably on about 5% of the lot coverage. But those trees just happen to fall right there where you'd put a house. And so, the number of trees may seem a little higher than I would like. But if you look at the positioning of the trees, very little coverage will be taken out. And then the very last thing, just to talk about something that I do, and I know it's not necessarily part of this, but since I don't want my house flooded, I do rainwater harvesting on all the houses that I do. So, 212A Hibiscus has a 4,500 gallon tank underneath the driveway. 105 Hibiscus has about a 4,500 gallon collection tank underneath the driveway. And the new house at 107 is going to have 10,000 gallons of collection. So, basically, the impervious coverage that we've created, the rain like today, a two-inch rain or whatever this was today, at 107, we'll collect 10,000 gallons of water or thereabouts, or 8,000, which is as much or more rain than was displaced by impervious coverage. I do everything that I can and will continue to do anything to work with the city, anybody else, to try to make it to where this is an easier process. So, thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you, David.
Do you have any questions?
Douglas, we're going to start on your side. And did you have any questions for either Mr. Lewis or the board?
I have a question for the city manager and the city attorney. I'll ask the city attorney first. Mr. Lewis mentioned that we had a rain and a lot of his topsoil went down and washed down and went on to somebody else's property. Is the city subject, under this circumstance, to the law that the legislature passed a few years ago saying that if we give a approval for a development of a certain property and it causes damage to property downstream, the city is liable as well as the developer? And that's an extreme case. This is sort of a minor case. But is, does it apply?
Mr. Gregory, I think that was a Supreme Court decision that talked about the liability in that situation. I don't find it relevant to the public hearing on this item. And therefore, I would, would think it would be inappropriate for us to discuss it. It's much broader than the question of the recommendation, the, the public hearing on the recommendation from the ARC about the property at 107 Hibiscus. So, we ought to confine this discussion and the action item on the Hibiscus property to the Hibiscus property under question.
Thank you. Mr. Rapley, there was, where is that piece? Said the vote was unanimous. This is a memo from Mr. Joyce, chairman of the Architectural Review Committee. The vote was unanimous to recommend the city council approve, approval of the tree removal plan with the stipulations that they adhere to the tree protection plan, the tree trimming schedule and hours of operation within a residential area. Who, who oversees to make sure these three stipulations are observed? Does the city, what methodology do we use to make sure that these stipulations are constantly and vigorously observed?
Well, I would think, Mr. Gregory, it's a combination between, you know, our code enforcement officer and our building inspector from that standpoint. I'd have to find out, again, his methodology for inspecting, but that, that's the oversight process we have here for the city.
Should, do they notify the city that they're about ready to take down a tree? Or do we just assume that when we go out that they've taken down the right tree?
No, there wouldn't have to be notification that this was the tree that they were taking down. That'd be part of the plan and indicated to us as a city.
So, they would or would not be able to fall back on the distinction of developing, developed property versus undeveloped property?
I'm not sure, Ms. Gregory, as far as developed property versus undeveloped?
Under undeveloped property, you can, you're, you're, you're a lot more, excuse me, under developed property, apparently, as I read it, maybe it's just the opposite, you have more leeway in what you can take out. So, if you just declare something developed, do they even have to go through these various things?
You mean as far as the ARC?
Mm-hmm.
Again, I think that's what the process follows. And, you know, I wasn't intimately involved in this. You know, Ms. Thielen being our, who oversees our permits and process related to, you know, ARC and what's requirements, reviewed and provided this to the ARC from that standpoint as our staff member.
Well, I hope we do rigorously enforce these stipulations. It's just not this property, but there are a whole slew of properties all across the city that rigorous interpretation and enforcement is needed. Thank you.
I, I wasn't planning on asking this question, Mark, but since Douglas asked it, I'm having trouble understanding, if there's a Supreme Court decision that says that cities are liable for water damage caused by runoff, how is that not relevant?
This is, this is a public hearing on a recommendation about tree removal for the construction of a new single-family residence on an undeveloped lot at 107 Hibiscus. This is not a question of, a discussion about runoff in the event of a, of a situation. And, you know, I think it's premature for me to make any comment about it until I have an opportunity to review that court decision again.
Okay. I, I understand now. Is it appropriate, therefore, for us to ask Mr. Daggett, who's here representing the committee, whether that was considered, yes or no?
That is absolutely an appropriate question.
Okay. So, I would like to ask Mr. Dag, Dr. Daggett, sorry.
So, what is the question?
The question is, when you, when the ARC reviewed this tree removal, did you take into account the Supreme Court decision that holds cities liable in the event of damage caused to other properties by runoff?
No, and I don't think we're aware of the scope and effect on the law of, of day-to-day activities of our city.
I'm sorry?
I don't think any of us in our city really thinks of that on a day-to-day basis.
So, that wasn't something that was brought up?
No.
Okay. Thanks.
No.
Excuse me. I had a couple of other questions. I guess we're clarifying, as Mr. Gregory suggested, Mr. Rapley, that what happens between development or non-development, is, is there actually some difference? As Ms. Garcia suggested?
I'm not sure. At this point, I'll have to clarify that. And I will contact Ms. Garcia to...
To find out where that information came from.
And I will provide counsel that update as well.
Yeah. And the only other comment that I have is that I, I thank the mayor for suggesting that somebody be in charge of supervising on behalf of the city. But the person that he suggested is our code compliance officer and we always hear that he's very busy. I don't know if you've ever had a tree cut down, but because of death of trees, I've had to have two trees cut down. It takes about a half a day to cut down a sizable tree. So, I think we're talking about a lot of trees here. And I don't know that Louis is going to have time to stand around for all that time to watch all those trees come down. So, there probably ought to be several people involved. That's, that's what I would suggest. If I understand, this is a question for Mr. Lewis. When I first saw the first sheet, it didn't look like there were that many trees coming down. But it's also a little confusing because where the column is that says trees to be removed, are you listening, David?
Yes.
Okay. There's no identification on the numbers to the right, on the numbers to the, to the right of the yellow line, the trees remaining, it has a radius and spread. Are those numbers that are to the right of the, of the violet corresponding, are they also supposed to say radius and spread? Because they don't.
Yeah, and actually, well, I just made a column for radius. It should say diameter, yeah, diameter.
So, so if we...
But those columns, radius and spread, those apply to both the yellow and the purple columns. That's, those trees haven't changed any.
Well, well, they can apply to the purple column because the purple column has no numbers to the left. See, it only has numbers to the right and there's no identification above that that says what it is. You see what I'm saying?
Well, let's see. You're, you're right. So, like 71, 66 on the first page, then the first number is the radius.
So, does number eight respond to the radius? Should I just assume?
Correct.
And then the spread would be 20?
Yes.
Okay. So, so now we're talking about a radius that would be the tree trunk?
Correct, but it's not, it's the diameter. I mislabeled it. So, the radius would be half of that.
So, it should be the diameter of the tree trunk?
Correct.
Okay. So, basically, when you're showing the, I guess, the diameter of the trees that you're leaving, in some cases, they're a little bit more, in some cases, they're about the same. But we have two trees on the first page that have a diameter of 11. That continues on the second page, increasing to a diameter of 12. And then we go up to 13, 14, 18, 30. We're cutting down a tree with a diameter of 30?
Yeah, the tree that's right in the middle of the house has a diameter of 30. It's right, it's back.
Isn't that a heritage tree?
It's a, it's a large tree, but it is, if you look at the plat and you look at where the house is going, the tree's right in the middle. So, there really is not much that can be done. If I pull it forward, I take out those trees. I push it farther back, I take out trees. And, yeah, it's right there in the middle.
So, there's 24 trees coming down, according to this?
That'd be correct.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the 30 diameter and the 21 diameter. And I'm just wondering if there isn't something that can be done to save those trees? If there's some way to, to move them? There are tree experts who know how to do that?
You can't move a 30-inch diameter tree. It's, there's no way. It's in rock. You try to take it out, you're going to break the roots. So, it's, that's why you don't see it done.
And they couldn't have designed the house so that it wasn't a... And they couldn't have designed the house so that it wasn't affecting that because?
Well, we could d- design a house in the form of a.
I mean, you have, you have here, you have here three thirty-inch trees to come down, one forty-five? Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's a, I'm looking at a different column. Okay, one thirty-inch tree. That's just the spread. No way for it to come up through the roof. Some people do that. They design tree. We have a number of houses in Castle Hills that were designed around trees. You can't do that?
The, i- if you look at the plat, you see the, the drip line of that tree, you'd have to have a thirty-foot hole in the house. And even then, you would basically be building a house that had about ten feet on one side and maybe ten feet on the other, maybe fifteen, that you shaped around a tree. And a- as much as I love trees, and I know everybody else does, there are so many trees on this lot that if you take an aerial view, because most people are looking at coverage, it's not going to be noticed by the air. It's a big tree that the acorn fell in a really bad spot, and I can't move the house forward.
Right.
And I, if I move the house much farther back, the lot keeps getting narrower and narrower, so the house is going to get smaller and smaller, and it would be.
Yeah, I get that. But there is no other thirty-inch tree on this lot. There, I mean, none of the thirty.
I know. There's, there's about, you know, eighty other trees that are quite large.
What is this, the gray section?
The gray section?
In the second, the second page, there's a, there's a yellow, and then you have a gray section in, in it.
The, the yellow is the trees that are staying, and the gray are purplish.
No, no, this.
Oh, 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 you're talking about the gray within the yellow. Okay. So the very first, and this was made for the architectural, I hadn't realized I would need as much. So I, I gave you the same thing, and you had an earlier one that didn't have the gray numbers. What happened was is that we rearranged the house, took out a leg of the driveway, so I could save another thirteen trees. And, and that was just proactive on our part. The architect drew the house, we, we put it on the, the tree survey and saw that there was a way to, we got rid of a third covered patio.
Yeah, but what's happening with these trees? Are they staying or?
Yeah, they're staying.
So in other words, it should just be yellow?
Well, the reason why I'd made them, because it was a continuation of a earlier land, and I wanted to show the difference between the two. So I made those a different color, so that you could see that we went out of our way to add more trees to be saved. Changed the house, took out part of the driveway.
Okay. That, thank you, David. That's all I have.
Ms. McLean, did you have any questions for anyone regarding during this public hearing?
No, I don't. Thank you, David, for your presentation, and Matt as well.
Uh, Ms. McLean, did you have, uh, Ms. Scott, did you have any questions regarding the item on table, please?
I didn't have any questions. I had compliments. This is a beautifully well-proportioned design on the property. I want to thank you for going ahead and working on saving the additional thirteen trees. I've looked at it, at it closely, and it, and appears that you've only removed the ones necessary to, to get this home on the lot. And I'm excited for new development. I don't have any questions for you, other than it's, like I said, it's just a beautifully well-proportioned design. Thank you so much, like I said, for working hard to save those additional thirteen trees that were originally going to be taken out, but you kept them. And we do have a building inspector that does go and inspect the site as the process is going on. So I would think between our building inspector and our code compliance that we should be able to keep track of this project. Thank you so much for your time and effort on this project.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, Dr. Daggett. If I can bother you again, please, sir. When, when you reviewed this plan, did you consider the effect of tree removal on runoff?
On, on runoff?
Runoff.
Yes, we did. And, and part of his unique design is the water retention underneath the driveway and collecting will pretty much mitigate most of the impermeable surface that he is adding to the property.
Okay. Is it the council's opinion that the, the runoff protection will be adequate?
Yes.
Okay.
It's above required, which is not.
Second question. Ms. Ms. Winger brought up a term I'm not familiar with, and I don't know what it means or what the limitations are. She mentioned a heritage tree. Do you know, can you tell me a little bit about that, or is that beyond the scope?
Heritage tree is above twenty-four inches in diameter, I believe. A heritage tree means any tree attaining a circumference of one-half of the state record for that tree species, as defined by the State Forest Service, or having a trunk circumference of seventy-five inches or more, or about twenty-four inches in diameter. So that is the definition of a.
So is a thirty-inch tree a heritage tree?
Would be considered a heritage tree.
Okay. What, what are the limitations on removal of heritage trees? Can you, can you tell me that?
To avoid it when possible.
Is it avoided if possible, or are there any, any hard and fast mandatory restrictions?
To avoid it when possible.
Okay. So taking that tree out is not, is not a violation of the law or violation of the standard?
You make the lot unusable for putting a home on it if you couldn't take it out in that situation. So it would.
Okay, I think that's my questions. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, is the motion appropriate?
Uh, yes, sir.
No, sir.
No, it is not. Sorry.
Still in the public hearing.
We're still in the public hearing. Sorry, my fault.
My fault.
Thank you, Mark.
You can close the public hearing.
Okay. David, I want to also thank you for your working with everyone the best you could. And I know everybody's going to think I'm trying to be funny, but I may even build a tree house on my thirty-inch. So maybe instead of moving that tree, I would like to visit with that when we, when we're talking about the one oh seven.
That's probably prohibited, Mayor.
I'm sure someone will say something about it. Okay, that's a true statement. All right. It is, it is now seven forty-nine. And we are closing the public hearing and would like to entertain a motion.
Mayor, if you could open item number two under new business, which is the action item for this matter?
Thank you. We're opening item two, hold on there, Skip. Discuss and possible action upon the Architectural Review Committee's recommendation to approve an application submitted by David Lewis, agent for properties Jeff and Tracy Garvins, for tree removal for the construction of a new family, single-family residence on the undeveloped lot located at one oh seven Hibiscus Lane. Legal description CB five seven seven eight, Woods West of West Lot One A. I invite a motion at this time?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the recommendation of the ARC Committee to approve the tree removal plan with the stipulations that they adhere to the tree protection plan, the tree trimming schedule, and the hours of operation within a residential area as reflected in city ordinances as recommended by the A R C.
Mr. McCormick has a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Scott. Is there any more discussion on this as we move forward? Douglas?
I'd like to ask Mr. Snoll. I was on the council when Marcy Harper, Harper pushed the passage of heritage trees. I don't recall whether or not at that time it was allowed to take down heritage trees with, I just don't remember the law. If it turns out that they can't do it, is this subject to the law? I, I just don't know. I don't recall.
Mr. Gregory, I've never read the city's tree ordinance. I can't comment on what it says or whether there's a prohibition against the removal of a heritage tree. I just heard the vice chair, I believe, of the Architectural Review Committee tell us what the rule is about heritage trees.
So if, if, if it turns out that there is a prohibition, can the council, you would have to come back to council, I would think, give an exception?
Without reading the tree ordinance, I cannot tell you what options there would be under that circumstance. I do think that if our Architectural Review Committee has made a recommendation, knowing, as, as was recognized by Ms. Winger in her questions, that there was a heritage tree affected by the proposal, they, and, and if the A R C felt that was not permitted under our ordinance, they would have made a different recommendation to this council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Leslie?
Matt, was that, you, you were aware of the tree ordinance when you did it, and that's what you were referencing, right?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have your answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Was there anybody else who had any discussion to bring up at this time? Okay. With that said, I believe we have a motion, and we have a second on the table, one by Mr. McCormick, seconded by Ms. Scott. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, Council. That's item number two on business. David, have a good day. I'll call you on the tree thing. I believe we're going to do a very, very quick recess only because we need to. So it is seven fifty-five, and we'll recess for five minutes. All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Uh, you're on agenda. You're on agenda items, sir. There you go, Mr. Castaneda. Yes, sir, agenda item. Mr. Castaneda, right. Okay, good. Minor two. It's not all true, okay? Minnie, are we back on camera? Thank you, Minnie. All right, let's move on to the next item, which is new business under discussion. Item three, discussion and possible action upon ordinance number two oh one eight one oh oh nine A, amending chapter eighteen, fire prevention and protection, to delete the assistant fire chief position and adjust section eighteen through twenty-four regular firefighter positions in the city code of ordinance. I invite Ms. Winger and Mr. McCormick brought this forward. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the ordinance, making the assistant fire chief optional, which is what this actually does. And limit, and changing the text as stated in the ordinance.
Okay, I just want to make sure one thing, Mr. McCormick. You said optional. I don't see optional in here. Okay, well the.
It says which may include an assistant fire chief. That makes it optional.
Mark?
Yeah, here you go, Ms. Winger.
Hang on just a second, because there's, the item on the original motion is written as delete. Does that, does the packet override the actual motion? That's all I'm asking.
There's an ordinance here.
Mayor, are you waiting, waiting for an answer from me?
From you, yes, sir.
I believe the ordinance is consistent with the wording of the agenda.
That's all I need to hear. Thank you very much. Discussion and possible action on ordinance number two oh one eight dash one oh dash oh nine A, amending chapter eighteen, fire prevention and protection, to delete the assistant fire chief position and adjust section eighteen dash twenty-four regular firefighter positions in the city ordinance. We do have a motion to move forward by Mr. McCormick.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Winger. I'm assuming there's discussion on this item?
May I read the ordinance?
Of course.
Okay. The, the ordinance actually says mending section eighteen twenty-four to remove the number of required firefighters and to make the position of assistant fire chief optional.
We're going to start with discussion, and let's start on, you okay with that? Okay, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
They're saying it doesn't make a difference, but it does make a huge difference by not saying that we are required to have 20 fire, 20 regular, fully paid positions. That gives the option of possibly having less, and there's no way a fire department of our size can function with less than 20 full-time firefighters. In researching this, I've done quite a bit of reading on how fire departments work and how firefighters go about fighting fire. They have, and if Chief Dover might be able to help back me up on this, but they have a two-in, two-out rule. They have a buddy rule. You never go into a fire alone. You always go in with your partner. In order for them to be able to enter a building, you have to have two people ready to go in and two people outside ready to take their place. Is this correct, Chief? If you could help me explain this properly with a proper terminology?
Good evening, Council. That is correct, Ms. Scott. NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, has set forth recommendations, everything from the way we design our fire trucks, to the gear that we wear, to how we actually do our duties as firefighters. They set the standards. Their recommendation is the two-in, two-out rule. Basically says that firefighter, firefighting operations cannot begin unless you have two firefighters that are available to enter the structure and two firefighters outside that can work as a rapid intervention team in the event that they are inside fighting fire. Something happens, they have some form of emergency, you have two firefighters available to go in and then rescue those firefighters, if you will.
So with our current 20 is our number, and we have three companies. Each company has six members, but sometimes it's less than six because people are on vacation or they get ill. So we're not always guaranteed to have six people on duty each, each shift, correct?
That is correct. Our minimum staffing from the hours of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM is four firefighters. Ideally, the way this was designed, in previous years, the chief or the assistant chief would be on duty and they would augment staffing. After 5:00 PM until 7:00 AM at shift change, we have five, we can go down to five firefighters.
Okay. Now, of those five firefighters, you get a call out, you take two trucks, so you have two drivers. The drivers don't count towards those two in and two out, do they?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we had five, two driving the truck, that would leave three. So we'd have three firefighters. So then, at that point, when we got, reached a fire, if we only had five people on duty that evening, would we have to wait for someone else to show up from our interlocal agreement before anyone could enter the building?
Ideally, with five firefighters, five firefighters on duty, we could perform this function. Typically, the second truck arriving, that driver doesn't normally stay with his apparatus unless there's a need for that, to place the latter truck in service. When that's the case and we're down to five, we do meet, we can meet the fight, the two-in, two-out rule. The problem presents itself during the day. When staffing goes down to four, that's when it becomes an issue. Typically, the driver of the engine, his duty is solely to operate that truck and ensure that the firefighters that are inside and performing those duties have water, have the equipment that they need. So we don't typically use him in the instance of the two-in, two-out rule because he is already, I guess, tied up with enough duties doing that sort of-
Okay, so between having adequate staffing, people actually covering each, each shift, each company, A, B, and C, and then making, you know, people, like I said, they get sick, they go on vacation, that sort of thing. My concern is that if we change the ordinance to have less than 20 regular, full-time positions, we won't have all the shifts covered adequately and that we might end up costing time waiting for someone else to show up before we can actually start fighting a fire according to the recommendations of the National Fire Protection Association.
That's correct, and that would be my concern as well. We would have to wait for one of our mutual aid companies to arrive from Balcony Heights or Chavno Park or Leon Valley or Hollywood Park before we could begin the interior firefighting.
Okay, so that is my concern because they're saying that changing this where there is no minimum number of employees in the fire department won't change anything. I see it could drastically change, even by lessening it by one or two down to 18, could drastically change our response time and your time in being able to actually start taking care of putting that fire out. So that is my concern, is by taking out the minimum number of staff, is that quickly if positions are eliminated from next year's budget, which they have been, concerned more might be, then you're leaving, we're leaving our fire department understaffed. I have two children at home, and I am very concerned for their safety. God forbid we ever have a fire. I would hate for it to be on a night that we only have maybe four people on that evening, and I'm standing there helpless, waiting for Balcony Heights or Chavno Park or San Antonio to show up because their response time is not the same response time as yours. So I am just making very vocal that I disagree on taking out our minimum number of 20 employees. Thank you. Someone else may have other questions for you, but that's my concern, is that we won't be adequately staffed at less than 20.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. McCormick, since we're starting on that side, did you have any comments at this time? Thank you. Ms. McLean?
I would like to reiterate Mrs. Scott's concerns about the safety if the number is taken out and we have anything less than 20 full-time firefighters on staff. I am aware of the two-in, two-out industry standard, but what I found interesting is that if we had a volunteer fire department, you have to have 10 responders before they can even, at the call. You have to have 10 people show up for a volunteer fire department. With our situation, we have 20. Chief Dover is able to cover like he needs to. I worry that if we don't have the number of 20 in our ordinance, that we are jeopardizing the safety of our residents and our employees with the amendment, that the thought of having to wait for, for another crew to show up so that the firefighters could enter and even do search and rescue if there was a fire in my house and one of my children had not gotten out, absolutely disturbs me that anyone would consider putting our citizens and our employees at jeopardy.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Winger, did you have any comments on the item on the floor, please?
I do. As you said, Chief, the recommendation of the Firefighters Association is two in and two out.
That is correct.
So they're taking that into account. They're not recommending something that's unsafe. We were told by City Attorney Fletcher, who had researched this, that this was an ordinance that was originally passed in 1982.
Yes, ma'am.
In 1982, we did not have mutual aid. We do now.
We did have mutual aid then, ma'am.
In 1982?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, then, something was wrong then, but that was what he told us. And then it was revoted in 1995.
Yes, ma'am, reaffirmed in 1995.
So here's the thing. In 1982, we had a larger population. I don't know that we had more homes. I don't, I don't know the number of homes. I wasn't here at the time. 95 was a couple of years before I moved here, so I assume it was the same number, close to the same number of homes we have today. But Chavno Park, which has a population that's very close to ours and many more, you know, town home, garden home areas that were built up more recently, they don't have as many firefighters as we do, and they have a fire, their own fire department as well. So because I've mentioned this before, because of complaints that I've gotten from people who don't want us to have a fire department, and I do, I'm trying to save the fire department, believe it or not.
I wish you would direct them to me so that I could speak with them and speak at length at the importance of having a department. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Right.
And I could, I would love the opportunity to talk with them about that.
But the fact is, the fact is that if, if we had to, and this isn't lowering the number of firefighters, this is simply saying that it's not required, that we don't have to have that number.
Not required by-
That we have the 20.
By your opinion or by the opinion of the Fire Chief or the National Fire Protection Association?
No, no, I'm talking about the ordinance. I'm not talking about my opinion.
Okay.
I'm talking about the ordinance. If we have, if we have other cities, like, you know, Hollywood Park and, and Chavno Park, who have a lesser number of firefighters with no danger and not, not, not taking anything away from the Firefighter Association recommendation, because as you said, they're talking about two in, two out. So if you go for five per shift, adding an extra person, that gives us 15. That's not 20.
I'm sorry. I, I'm not getting your math.
If you have three shifts, you have three shifts.
Three shifts of six firefighters apiece.
If you have, if you were required, or it's recommended to have two in, two out.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be, for three shifts, that would be less. For five people, that's four people times three, that's 12. If you go for an extra person, just to make sure that you have the two in, two out, you would have 15. And in order to cover beyond that, say, I don't know what, you know, so many people being out sick or something, they have 17. Why do we need 20?
Well, if given the opportunity, I could come back at a different time, and I can show you where Chavno Park has been short-staffed or the minimum staffing that they have with their firefighters are already tied up, and we've responded to their city to make their calls for them. Since I've been chief and probably in my, I've been in the city 20 years, I can probably count the number of times on one hand where we've had to call another city to respond for us because we were not available to respond. I've done that a handful of times in the last two years.
But we don't have that many fires either.
I can show you if, if you would let me. Although our, our houses haven't changed and our population has gotten less, we're responding to more emergencies now than we ever have been. And if I could pull up the PowerPoint, I'd be happy to show you the numbers, if that's okay.
Please.
our call volume was. I attempted to make contact with Chief Riedel, as well as Chief Medbury, both retired chiefs that had worked here since the 70s, to find out if they could recall what kind of call volume we had during that time. It was quite a bit less than what we're at now. If you look at the, about the middle of this slide, beginning in 1991, we had 581 emergency responses. 1992, 651 emergency responses. 1993, 688 emergency responses.
But what is an emergency response?
That could be anything from an EMS call to a fire call, call to assist the police department, call for a gas leak, any one of the emergency responses that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. Going back the last three years, beginning in 2015, we responded to 830 emergency responses. That was the year after the Wedgwood tragedy. We actually saw a decline of about 100 calls after the Wedgwood shut down. In 2016, we responded to 913 emergency responses. In 27, 17, 975 emergency responses. And to date, and this is literally from about 5:15 this afternoon, we've responded to 735 responses to date this year. That being said, we have responded to four, if not five, structure fires in the city in the last year, from October of last year till this, this time now. One of those being a commercial structure, the Scrip Center at North Winston and Northwest Military. Additionally, we respond, we've responded to numerous structure fires with our neighboring cities, including Almous Park, one the most recent in Chavno Park, as well as Leon Valley and Balcony Heights. As you can see, our call volume continues to increase. Regardless of our population has gone down, we're responding to more emergencies now. Additionally, although with the strides that we've made in fire prevention, our homes are intricately safer. They truly are. But if you go and you do research, and I encourage all of you to Google UL Fire Studies, and they show a home that was built with furnishings from 19, the early 1950s, and a home with current furnishings, and you look at the burn time, it's dramatically less. You have less time to get out of a home. By the very nature of our job, minutes mean the difference between life and death, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, I'm trying to be truthful with you. If we're waiting on our neighboring cities to get there, it's, you're putting lives at jeopardy, plain and simple. With this position, if I may elaborate, the biggest thing is it would augment our staffing. The council at the time in 1982, as well as in, again, in 1995, saw the need for the minimum personnel. This would add the addition of a fire investigator and inspector, which are part of my current duties. Every fire has to be investigated regardless if we suspect it's arson or not. We have to determine what the cause was and where the, where it originated in the house or the structure. Additionally, they would help to take care of the day-to-day operations of the department while allowing me to focus on the administrative side. Typically, when Assistant Chief Fink was still here, before he retired, he was what I would basically call the operations chief. He handled the maintenance, the training, the day-to-day operations of our department while Chief Riedel focused on the administrative side. I currently juggle both of those. Task, I have delegated as much as I can to my shift captains.
But Chief Riedel did it for the last five years.
Yes, ma'am. And Chief Riedel also, not to discredit Chief Riedel, Chief Riedel did not respond to emergency responses with us, and I am an active fire chief. I have my gear in my fire truck right now. Earlier today, our staffing went down because one of the captains went home sick. We did not have a lieutenant on duty because he is on vacation, and we, so we did not have an officer in charge. So I pulled my gear off of the pickup and put it on the engine, and I rode from noon until 6:00 PM today on the fire truck. Typically, that's unheard of in most cities. We're a small city. I'm still a young man. I'm a little out of shape, admittedly, but the city manager can attest, I, I'm out here with these guys when they're working out. I try to stay in shape as best as I can to make sure that I can still do that job. And if need be, I'm willing to do it. And I'll tell you that if we actually pull numbers, I would almost guarantee in the last year and a half that I've been chief, I've responded to more incidents than, and I'm, again, not to discredit Chief Riedel, because Chief Riedel was a mentor of mine, a hero of mine, and a great man. I could almost guarantee you, I've responded to more incidents in the last year and a half than he did in the last five years. I see the need for hands, essentially, to be there. I'm not a, it's not beneath me to grab a broom or shovel or pitch in when these guys need, need help. That, that's my job. If I can't support them because they do one heck of a job for me, I, I'm, you know, what good am I doing? So I, I try to do the best that I can with what we have. There's, we come from a couple of different schools of thought. Chief Riedel was trained in the 70s.
Was what?
Chief Riedel was trained in the 70s. He took his fire certifications and began his training in the, in the 70s. I did that 25 years later in the, in the mid 90s. The way we approach emergencies, the way we fight fire, the way we do different things has changed dramatically in that time. And we, Chief Riedel and I would venture to say probably take a couple of different approaches to how we do the job. So to say that Chief Riedel could do it the way he did, yes, ma'am, he did, but he didn't leave the office much, I'll tell you that. And I'm responding with these guys day in and day out. And I'm responding with these guys, day in and day out.
But again, when you say that you have emergency responses, and I understand what they are, because I see your guys out there all the time, most of the time, they're not fires.
You're right. About seventy-five percent of what we do today is EMS calls. We respond ahead of the ambulance.
So because of that, the, the rule of two men, two out, applies to fires? It doesn't apply to anything else?
If there was a medical emergency at your house, would you want three firefighters there, or would you want five firefighters there?
Well, actually, I wouldn't want five, that would be too many, it would get in the way.
That's your opinion, but in any-
I've had a medical emergency-
In a traumatic event, I'll tell you that, five sets of hands is a big difference between-
Yeah, and it depends.
Two firefighters showing up, or fi, three firefighters showing up, when it's your loved one or anybody else. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not trying to make light of this, and I'm not trying to be overly dramatic, but I'm, I'm very passionate about my job, I'm very passionate about our city.
I know you are.
I've been here twenty years. I'm not- I'm not a resident of this city, but I consider this city my home. I, I truly do.
I understand.
And I've made long friendships with many of the residents here. I experienced the Wedgewood firsthand. I came on duty that morning. I fought fire in it, I helped remove different people, in different stages of the fire. That took a toll on us. And, you know, again, I can relate that to staffing, in many different ways. I don't know that it would have changed the outcome if we had more men on duty that day. I'd like to think that maybe it would have, but I, I can't say. Looking forward, and God forbid, forever in that situation again, I hope that we have adequate staffing, and we can make a difference, and we can prevent something like that from happening.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Douglas? Do you need that slide anymore?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
We're good. I have a question for Mr. Schnaw. In this ordinance, the last four lines, or after the semicolon, "Providing a severability clause," what does that refer to? Finding that the meeting in which the ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, "Providing a severability clause." What does that mean?
The severability clause is Section Six on page two of the ordinance, and it simply means that if there's any part of the ordinance is later determined to be unconstitutional, illegal, inoperative, or invalid, or ineffective by, ineffective by a court, the remainder of the ordinance is still valid and enforceable.
Much obliged.
Thank you, Douglas. Miss, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That was just the first. Going back to this thing, this slide.
Yes, sir.
The first line says, "The Assistant Fire Chief would add an additional fire inspector and fire investigator to assist with the plan review, so on and so forth."
Yes, sir.
How many fire inspectors and fire investigators do we have?
Currently, I require that every captain and every lieutenant that promote to go to inspector school, they're tasked with maintaining, we're mandated by state law to inspect every business inside our city at least once a year. That being said, I break the city down, north and south, splitting it by four-ten, and then split the north side of the city into three sections, the south side into three sections. In each shift, the one captain and one lieutenant is assigned that district, if you will, and they perform all of our annual fire inspections. However, I do all of the plan review, I do all the code review, I do all the CFO inspections for the city. The only exception to that is if, on the occasion that I'm on vacation or off, then I will attempt to task one of the captains or lieutenants to do that for me. But typically, I handle that side of it, they handle the annual inspections.
On the spread, and notice that doesn't say, "An additional firefighter."
No, sir, it does not.
Now, what I find interesting is, we had a spreadsheet given to us last, whenever it was. It shows we have twelve firefighters. We're not, and we've had that for, for a long time. I'm opposed to changing that, simply because, if it ain't broke, you don't fix it.
Yes, sir.
But I find it interesting, that the Assistant Fire Chief is not expected to be an additional firefighter.
No, that-
He's basically doing the inspector and investigating work.
If I could go back to the slide before that, I could show you some of the other duties that I included. And you're correct, you're not going to find it on this slide either, and that, that's my fault. I should have had the forethought to put that in there. Basically, with the Assistant Chief, if I could go on to explain real quick, and to take nothing away from our, our fine police department, we use some titles that they use differently. For me, a captain is the equivalent of a sergeant in the police department, they're in charge of their shift. A lieutenant is the equivalent of a corporal. They're there to be in charge of that shift in the absence of the captain. A fireman is the same thing as a patrolman. My assistant chief's position would be the same as, as Captain Zuniga. So I don't want to create, I know it creates some confusion when we start talking about shift captains and lieutenants, because it's a little bit different on the police department's side. I just bring that up, just because of the last line there, that shows captains and lieutenants. But anyway, this would allow for the continuity of command in the absence of the fire chief. Currently, I plan my vacations based on, basically, who's, who's on duty. I have to submit a list to the, the city whenever I go to leave, saying who's going to be on duty, and who to contact, which day, when I'm not there. I do kind of address the deal about the firemen. It helps to augment staffing when shorthanded. Our minimum staffing goes down to four firefighters during the day. In the past, the Assistant Chief would ride and work in the place of the missing firefighter. Our minimum staffing has not changed, but we lost the ability to use the Assistant Chief to assist when short-staffed. The Assistant Chief would assist with the operational command of the department, allowing myself, the fire chief, to focus on the administrative command and operations of the department. This would allow the shift captains and lieutenants to focus on the emergency responses, training, and day-to-day operations. One thing that I probably failed to mention, that I would have been a very valid point in here, is the, the overtime, right now. The firefighters have to burn their comp time, they have to burn their vacation time, and we have to keep our staffing at a minimum, which oftentimes means I have to bring in an overtime firefighter to keep that staffing at the minimum staffing. Our overtime, and if you go back and look at our finances, the, our overtime has gone up, since losing that position. Last year, we had a very unfortunate year, we had three firefighters that suffered illness or injury, and we actually brought on a temporary firefighter, if you will, to be in place to help augment our staffing and augment being shorthanded, until we could get all the firefighters back up and back, healthy and, and on duty. That began in June of last year, and we were not back until April the first of this year. So if we, in my mind, the Assistant Chief would certainly have helped relieve some of that, and certainly would have, I would think, almost eliminate the need for the part-time or, you know, temporary firefighter that we brought on, that we actually let go in April.
So, yeah, so are you saying that it is typical, of a typical weekday, two-thirds of the firefighters are not here?
Yes, sir. I, I say that, this week, Monday already, we were down to four firefighters during the day. Today, we actually, like I said, had one firefighter that I sent home. He was willing to try to tough it out. My fear was, he's going to get everybody else sick on duty. We're in close quarters, just go home. He was running a fever, there was no reason to keep him there. So I did what I had to do, I grabbed my gear, and I put it on a truck, and said, "Let's go."
I find it interesting that Chief Riedel did not bring to the council the need to replace the chief, the Assistant Chief, and I asked him about that, he said, he didn't think it was needed to replace him at that time. And then, when we were looking for his replacement, he said, "I think we should have a temporary position of Assistant Fire Chief," and he wanted you to be in that position. He says, "It's only temporary, because we wanted a-"
I, I sat-
A fluid chain of command, once you, once he was gone, you step right in. But that we went five years without this. Now, three of the five members of this council were here on last year's budget, we approved the, the budget. No one raised, I didn't, no one raised that we were, we couldn't function without twenty firefighters, that all shifts could not be covered adequately.
I'll tell you, sir, that I can-
Excuse me, just, let me finish.
I apologize.
We suddenly discover this now. Frankly, of this ordinance, there are two out of the three things I, at least one, I couldn't agree with. But I find it interesting, that Chief Riedel, who had an outstanding record for many, many years, didn't see the danger that you see, of not having an Assistant Fire Chief, who is not expected to be a firefighter, that he's doing administrative work. Now, which you're doing presently, which Chief Riedel must have done, somebody must have done it.
Yes, sir.
And it's said, now, we're, I think it did, the whole department did an outstanding job. It ran smoothly. I don't know of any fire in which there was a problem. Was there a problem in any fire we've had the last five years, except for the Wedgewood?
I could go back, and I could nitpick a lot of things over different fires, that I would have liked to have seen different.
But twelve firefighters is pretty good size for our city. It's been that way, even when we were twenty-five percent larger. I don't want to reduce that by one iota.
Again-
If we're just getting an administrative person.
It's not an administrative, just an administrative position, sir. And I, I thought I'd made that clear. To want to go back to the, why Chief Riedel didn't fight for it, or whatever else, I can tell you that in recent conversations, he regrets ever letting the position go. And I, I'm sure many of you still have his phone number, you can contact him if you care to. But I can tell you that, in my personal conversations with him, he regrets ever letting that position go. It was my understanding at the time when it happened, it was supposed to be a temporary deal, where we were not going to replace that position, and see how we did for six months. To what you said, that it was never brought up, I was sitting in the budget meeting in which he presented to bring the position back, probably three years ago.
On a temporary basis?
No, sir, it was suggested by council. I, I don't remember it that way. I don't, I don't want to argue, but I do, I do not remember it that way. He was suggesting that we bring it back, and it was recommended by then-council, that we make it a temporary with a sunset clause, that it be just to find his replacement.
That's right. Temporary.
I've got to comment on that, too, when you finish.
Got you.
I, you know, I'm frankly, this, this is a, this is-
And I-
I just don't have the expertise to know whether or not, on the, on the face of it, 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 it sounds like all, all this is, is a glorified book.
If I, if I may go back to-
Let me finish, please.
Okay, and then I would like the opportunity to finish my conversation, sir.
Sure, sure, of course, but I, I just don't know whether Chief Riedel was right for years, or you're right, right now. I don't know.
I can tell you that you-
And I have, I have to admit, I've gone back and forth on this for some time, because we've run well without it. I see the-
That, and that's your opinion?
Yeah, well, I, I think we have a, you've had an outstanding record over the last five years. I think the record speaks for itself, and that's my opinion. We've run well without it. But I don't know whether or not it made a material difference, I just don't know. And because I don't know, I, I think I have to err on the side of keeping the position, even though I don't want to keep it, because I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm just not sure that it is.
Understood.
I just, but I, I just don't have enough expertise. Now, my, I have a cousin, whose son is the top-
Point of order.
Executive in the American Firefighters Association.
Point of order on the table, Mr. Gregory.
We've gone beyond the scope, it has nothing to do with his relative.
Well, if you'd let me finish, you'd find that it does. My cousin's child is the executive in the American Firefighters Association. I've been trying to reach him for several weeks, to find out his position on this. He is in the know. I wanted to get good, expert advice, I have not been able to reach him. I'll continue to do so. But at this stage of the game, I have to err on the side of, and that doesn't mean I'm going to be that way next year.
Understood.
I'll have to err on the side of, I guess we got to keep it.
Thank you, sir.
Darrell, while you brought that up, it kind of brought something to mind about why Chief Riedel, can you turn on the lights, please?
Point of order. They're discussing over here, I'm not paying attention.
Oh, okay. Y'all through?
Mr. Mayor, minor discussions aren't going to impede any discussion by the council.
Whether legal or not, they are disrupting. Darrell, you know, we talked a while back about what your duties are now, as a, as a fire department, and, and I think that it'll help shed some light on why you make so many calls now different, differently than you do, than you did five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, one year ago. And when we, when we have an accident up on the freeway, I can't remember five years past, when you had to have the trucks up there and everything involved in that, in order to make sure nobody gets killed up there, like us, forget about the person on the highway, to block traffic, that is a norm across the nation.
That's a recommended practice set forth by the National Highway Traffic Safety-
Exactly right. And now you have every fire department that I know, when an accident happens up there, whether it's small, large, in-between, or whatever, it's, even though it would be a recommendation, would you think that it, it would at least protect our men, to have our fire trucks in the way of cars traveling down, whatever speed they are?
Of course.
On a, on a major freeway?
Of course.
Okay. That, that's what I think this number of calls that we can't explain come from. It comes from not only the protection of our people, but it also comes for the protection of the, of the people that are up on the highway, slows things down. I witnessed one today. Another question I have is, you know, this mutual aid thing has come up in, and, and if I ask you, I just want to make sure that the public knows, have I asked you these questions, or set you up for this this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. This mutual aid agreement, that is so important now to our sister cities, we have one with Balcony's Heights, we have one with Chavino Park, we have one, I could go down the list, and how, how do they feel, or how do you feel, when Chavino Park is short on men, and depending on Castle Hills, to bail, to bail them out, because they don't have enough men on their fire force, and you're leaving our city unprotected, when our trucks have to go out for mutual aid?
First, may I say that our city's always priority one, for us.
Okay.
In the event that we respond to one of our neighboring cities, if we had an emergency in our city, we drop everything, we return to our city.
But you're still out in Chavino Park, you could be in Hollywood Park, what if my house catches on fire?
Yes, sir. So, I mean, that being said, you talk to any fire chief in the nation, I don't care if they're from the smallest town in South Texas to the New York City, they're always going to tell you, the more firefighters they have, the better. In my mind, it's, it's an easy sell. Obviously, it's very difficult. It's, it's a safety concern. It's keeping the firefighters safe, and it's keeping our residents safe. I respond to Chavino Park with as much passion, and with the, in my mind, the thought of protecting everybody that I can, just like I would in my own city. That being said, you know, there's a delayed response there, we're a little bit longer getting- you know, there's a delayed response there. We're a little bit longer getting there, just like they would be returning to our, coming to our city to help us. You know, I, I would never say it makes me mad or anything else. It, it's a challenge, and it's a challenge that I know that Chief Naughton in Chavino Park needs help. So I'm sending as many guys that we can without, you know, really trying to keep us from being too short, but just ensuring that the safety of their firefighters, the safety of their residents. Um, that's just as important to me as the safety of our firefighters and the safety of our residents.
I'm not trying to create a prophet of doom here. All I'm asking, I've always wondered, uh, if you're out there, they had a major fire out in Hollywood Park a month ago. We had everybody out there. What's going to happen when, uh, we have a fire here in that particular situation? You're fourteen miles from the city.
In the instance of that, uh, we as chiefs, we get together and we plan as best we can. Of course, we try not to deplete our city of too many resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I follow up on that? Because that's a good question.
Sure.
That's a, it, it, we pride it ourselves in our interlocal agreement. And I wonder if our interlocal agreement becomes our Achilles' heel. We don't get a Wedgwood, the interlocal agreement works well when we have a Wedgwood. But what if we have some, and, and the mayor's right, we're fourteen miles away with our fire trucks. Where it is. And we get a fire over here thirty minutes, twenty to thirty minutes away from where the trucks are. The city is totally exposed because we're away, because the interlocal agreement requires us or asks us to be there.
We still keep firefighters in the city. We still keep apparatuses
If we have them.
Available.
Yeah, if we have them, but you're saying during the downtime, we only have four out of twelve.
So we would send two of those firefighters out, and then we make plans, us as chiefs, we meet regularly, at least once a month, the Allen Wary Fire Chiefs meet. Uh, we, as our mutual aid cities, I can tell you that I'm on the phone with Chief Naughton or Chief Ward, Chief Patrico numerous times, uh, weekly. Some, some of them more often than others. Uh, we try to bounce as much information off each other as we can, asking questions and, and what ifs. And we try to plan when we have these large scale incidents, uh, leaving availability of other cities there to augment our own cities when we're responding. Such is the case with the Chavino Park Fire Department. We actually, uh, Chief Naughton called Leon Valley ahead of Balcony Heights with the thought that Balcony Heights was centrally located between Leon Valley and Castle Hills. They could help augment and, uh, come to our aid or Leon Valley's aid in the, in the event that the need arise. It's, it's planning on our part that we try to prevent. We're, I mean, we can what if everything, you know? Unfortunately, I don't have all the answers. Um, I just try to make the best plan set forward. I didn't bring this forward last year for the simple reason that I was a brand new chief, and I was asking for a considerable amount of money to replace a twenty-year-old fire truck that needed to be replaced. I've been married twenty years, and I've learned to pick my battles. I, I don't mean to bring too much humor to it, but, or make light of it, but, um, at the time, I felt the need was there to replace the fire truck greater than, uh, replace this position. I can tell you that my best laid plans would have us with twelve firefighters on a shift, let alone in the entire department. We'd have every piece of equipment, the greatest and, and everything. I know that's not practical. I do have future plans to attempt to get as many grants as I can and, and try to augment some of our staffing. I'm sorry, not our staffing, our equipment. There are grants out there for staffing, however, in my mind, they're not very beneficial. It's only for a short amount of time, and then the city has to come up with the money to then keep those firefighters.
It seems, it seems like the obvious question is not being asked. Why are we hiring basically seventy-five thousand dollar firefighter? Why don't we just add one more firefighter?
Because the duties of that person would actually mirror more or less what I'm doing as well. That is just part of the task of what they're doing. I, I would gladly take
So if we brought on a additional firefighter, you would still want, uh, the fire chief?
Yes, sir. I, I would. I mean, and I know from a practicality standpoint, it wouldn't be practical. I could tell you that if I thought I could do it tomorrow, I'd tell you we need to replace the engine. That's not practical. The engine's ten years old. I project to keep it in service another ten years. I only ask for six sets of bunker gear, uh, this next budget year. In a perfect world, I'd have asked for nineteen and replaced everybody's gear at the same time. I'm, I'm trying to plan for the future. The Wedgwood is going to be opening up again soon, in another year or two. I anticipate our call volume to return to another hundred calls, being added to what is already increasing day to day. I'm looking at the future. I hear a lot from council that our population hasn't changed, our housing hasn't changed, we don't have any more homes. And I respect that, however, we're responding to more emergencies than we did in nineteen eighty-two. We're responding to more emergencies than we did in nineteen ninety-five. I, I don't have an answer for you why that's increased, although our population has dropped and, you know, things of that nature. I, I don't have that answer. I'm just looking at the future and the safety of the firefighters, the safety of our residents, and trying to plan for what I feel is best for the city.
Are you through? Ms. McScott?
I had one other point I wanted to make. We do have a lot of calls, and a lot of those are motor vehicle accidents, correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, a lot of these calls are motor vehicle accidents because it's our firefighters that have the jaws of life. They have the inflatable, um, not exactly sure what they call, they go under and lift cars up
Airbags.
Airbags, to get them off. So I know when I'm driving in Castle Hills, I feel very safe knowing that if I'm in a car accident with my two kids, and they have two of their friends with them, so it's myself and four children pinned in a car, I want five sets of hands out there to get those children out of that car. Anyone who's in a car accident, I can be crossing Northwest Military going home tonight, and someone will run that light. I see them run that light all the time. So, and I've seen three accidents at Northwest Military in Carrollwood, where that yield sign is. We have a lot of motor vehicle accidents, and that's a lot of those calls. And that is also life-saving, because you have serious trauma and injuries happening in those vehicles. So, we're talking fires, yes, and that is very important, and that is your main goal as firefighters, but you're also serving us when we are in motor vehicle accidents. When, um, someone in our household is choking, and the Hymick maneuver is not working, and you come and you help. When someone's having a heart attack, when someone isn't having a heart attack, but it's just a panic attack, thank goodness, and it's not a heart attack, we don't know. You serve us in so many capacities, and I do not want to see our fire department left shorthanded by limiting the number of positions. I just can't stress enough how much our department does. Mr. Mayor, are we going to allow citizens to speak?
We're getting to that. You know, before, Mr. McCormick, did you have anything to say? Thank you, sir, for your patience.
Chief Dover,
Yes, sir.
You said a while ago that burn time is less.
Yes, sir.
And it wasn't clear to me which of the burn times you were referring to as less. You mean burn time is less now than it used to be?
Yes, sir.
Because of the artificial materials used in upholstery, for example?
That's exactly it. Uh, a lot of our synthetic materials now are petroleum-based, and it's creating fires that burn hotter and much faster than they did in the fifties.
So it's necessary to have a quick response time to be very effective at all, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How many out of town calls do we typically have in a year or a month? I know we've had several in the last few months.
We respond quite, to quite a few where we get canceled en route, uh, where we never even make it to that city. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I could get those for you, uh, as soon as tomorrow.
Just give me something with windage.
Uh, I would say we probably respond on average, uh, in a week, probably five to ten times to our mutual aid cities.
Really?
That being said, oftentimes we are canceled en route.
So you say most of the time you're canceled en route?
I would say a vast majority of those, yes, sir.
So more than, more than half time?
Mo, yes, sir.
Most of the time, vast majority you're canceled en route. But there's still those, those, uh, calls where you wind up being involved in a, in a firefight somewhere out of town, during which time you, you've got people here in town. Typically, how many people do you leave in, in city when you go on an out of town call?
Oftentimes, it's two to three firefighters, and we call in our off-duty personnel to, uh, respond and backfill the station.
Do you do that before?
As they're responding, if we find out that it's a working fire, uh, I've instructed all of my captains and lieutenants to drop the hammer, if you will, and, uh, get off-duty personnel responding back to the city.
Okay. Uh, and about how many auto fires are we having these days?
Vehicle fires, I would say probably, on average, probably six to ten.
Six to ten a week?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. A week, no, sir. Uh, probably six to ten a year.
Six to ten a year.
Yes, sir.
So even though we have the high traffic volume on, on four-ten, we don't have that many more fires because of it?
Not vehicle fires, no, sir. We see an increase in the, the vehicle accidents. Um, of course, weather plays a factor, and, and the vehicle accidents and things of that nature.
How many vehicle accidents do we have?
I would say probably on a weekly to, let's say a month, I would say we respond to probably ten to fifteen vehicle accidents.
A month?
I, I would say so. It, it varies, some months more, some months less, the severity of the accident.
I'm sorry, the fire department responds to all of those?
Yes, sir. Well, I can't say all of them. The police department responds to them any more than we do when they're minor, uh, accidents and the fire department is not needed because there's no injuries or no fluids or anything on the ground that would require us to be out there.
Typically, when you respond to an automobile accident, which vehicle do you take? Do you take the platform or the ladder?
We take the, uh, the engine and the, uh, platform, both.
Engine and platform, both?
Yes, sir. And if it's up on the main lanes, typically I respond with the fire department.
And when you respond to out of town fires, you take the platform?
Yes, sir, unless specified by the city that they, they need the engine. Now, that being said, if for some reason the engine or the platform is out of service, say due to a mechanical issue, uh, then we will send them in the rescue truck to, uh, keep the, one of the pieces, one of the fire apparatus, one of the engines, if you will. Our platform actually serves dual purposes. It's a fire engine and a ladder truck. Uh, so in the event that the engine goes down or is not available, the platform can respond and act as a fire engine, if you will, as well.
And the engine you're referring to is the ladder with the ladder truck?
No, sir. The engine is the, uh, the two thousand eight Pierce Quantum fire engine. Uh, we have a two thousand eight Pierce Quantum fire engine with a pump and a tank. The platform is the, the newest apparatus to the city, um, that has a pump and a tank.
And the engine just has ladders on the side, right?
Correct. There's no
That's what I'm telling the ladder truck.
Okay.
Okay. And so what's left in town is the, is the engine and two or three people to operate the engine. And we'd have to call out of town help to get, and, and we have other auxiliary firemen coming in or off-duty firemen coming in to assist if necessary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about whether this assistant fire chief is actually a fireman. And it looks to me from your, from your, uh, display up here, your, your chart, that he is pretty clearly a fireman. You're, you say he helps to augment staffing when shorthanded. And then the next one says, in the past, the assistant chief would ride or work in place of missing firefighters.
Yes, sir.
So he's a firefighter, right?
Of course. Yes, sir.
He may, he may be, he may be an assistant chief, but he's still, he's still a firefighter.
He's an assistant chief by title, but
Aren't you still a firefighter?
I'm still a fireman. Yes, sir.
So all of our guys, captains, lieutenants, what are, all of our guys are firefighters, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Every one of our, uh, everyone here is a firefighter, and at the very minimum, an EMT. Uh, I do have paramedics on staff, but we're all trained, uh, in emergency, as emergency medical technicians or paramedics as well.
On balance, you, you'd say that the mutual aid agreements that we have, collateral aid assistance agreements we have with other towns would be to our benefit as well as theirs?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just so you have an idea what my thoughts are on this, I'm, I'm really reluctant to go below six people on a ship, on a crew. And I've done, I've done these kinds of studies with, with air crews in lots larger environments than this. And the, the problem is that when you have a, a vacation period, and you've got twenty guys, what you've got is almost all the time, you've got at least one guy gone on vacation. Virtually all the time.
Absolutely.
You've got one guy out for vacation. So your crew is down to five to start with.
Yes, sir.
And then whatever you have in illness is in addition to that, or disability, or some, some other kind of thing, injury, illness, whatever, takes that down a little bit more.
Yes.
Not a whole guy, but probably a quarter guy on the average. A fourth of a guy's gone out because of sickness or, or, or injury. So that augmented, uh, fire crew, the assistant fire chief would fill those billets if necessary, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when you're out, the assistant fire chief would fill your spot?
Absolutely.
Odds are, you're going to take a vacation every year, aren't you?
I hope to. I hope to take a
And occasionally you get sick too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm still thinking about it. I'm, I'm really reluctant to go below six guys on a crew. Even though, uh, Chavino Park has a seventeen-man fire department and a lower number of people on their operating crews. They're running, I think, four guys on their operating crews.
I, I guarantee you that if you contacted Chief Naughton, he would tell you that he has a need for more firemen.
Well, I'm sure. I've never, I've never heard an operational commander say, I've never heard an operational commander say, in any force or in any business, that he, he needs less people. I need to get rid of some of these slugs, throw them out.
Sure.
Never heard anybody say that.
Sure.
No, I was going to comment that sometimes I do, but that's okay. Doesn't have anything to do with the city, of course.
Okay, certainly not. Well, anyway, I, I appreciate your candor and appreciate you coming up and giving us the word.
Thanks, sir.
And you made a comment that I'd like to follow up on sometime. You said you speak in public about the fire department to any group. If there's a group that'd like to hear you, I'd be happy to sponsor that and put you up someplace. If there's people in here that want to know more about the fire department, uh, I think Chief Dover's got to tell you about it.
Thank you.
One of the things I, I recall when we first discussed the fire department, I came over and spent the day with you, or at least part of the day, over at the fire department. And we talked about, uh, your staffing operation, and you told me you didn't have an assistant chief, and you don't have an assistant, uh, admin clerk or anybody like that to do paperwork and shuffle files or anything of that sort. So you and the assistant chief, or you by yourself have been doing that, and whoever fills in during the day from, from the crew would help you with the paperwork, right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I was surprised when you told me you didn't have an assistant chief and you had no, no admin clerk. Because with an operation, e- even, even a relatively small operation like that, there's still a lot of stuff to get done. And you commented that it was, it kept you busy, but you were able to, you were able to make it work.
Yes, sir.
And so for that, I think you're going to be commended for the last five years, working without either an admin clerk or an assistant chief. Guess that's all I've got at the moment.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Winger?
Um, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
You, you mentioned that you didn't bring this up last year because you were asking for a lot of money for the fire truck.
That is correct.
But the fact is, the first year, the fire truck was paid for by the sinking fund. What we're facing now, and this is why it's become an issue, is the fact that now is when we're paying for the fire truck.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what people are responding to. Suddenly, there's all this extra money coming out. So for you to come in just when that's happening and ask for this additional position that we've been functioning without for five years, weren't you doing some of this work under, under Chief Riedel? Wasn't somebody else doing some of this work?
I can tell you that, yes. There were, as much as could be, the duties that could be delegated to the captains has been delegated. Unfortunately, the captains only work every third day. My firefighters, captains and lieutenants work a twenty-four on forty-eight hour schedule. Uh, the crew that's on today won't work again until Friday. They're on for twenty-four hours.
You mean the captains work less? You mean the captains work less days?
Uh, no, ma'am, they work the same amount of time as the firefighters do.
So everybody's the same?
Right, but I work, my position and the position of the assistant chief is there daily, Monday through Friday from, say, seven to four, eight to five, whatever, however we decide to staff it.
But the point is, you still have a staff there. There are still other people that can do things.
Yes, ma'am, but the point that I'm.
Because you're not out all the time.
The point that I'm attempting to make is that the captain and the lieutenant that's on duty today will not be on duty again until Friday. In the meantime, there's tasks that they may begin doing today.
Yeah.
That require follow up tomorrow, that it's not ideal for the next captain to attempt to try to pick that up or complete that task as required, so I take on that duty.
Okay, well, but again, that's been going on for five years and we've been, you know, I mean, I know you're complaining, but it seems we've been doing fine and now we have the additional expense of the fire truck. The fact is, the Wedgwood, according to them, will not be open until December of 2020, which is unlikely they're even going to make that date because usually that's delayed. So now we're talking about two years that we don't need anybody for the Wedgwood.
That, that's your opinion, ma'am.
Okay, and that's exactly what we're talking about, is that this ordinance doesn't prevent you from coming in later and saying, well, now we've got the Wedgwood and we have all these extra calls, but for the meantime, at least we can recognize the complaints that are coming from the citizens that are saying that we're spending too much money.
And again, I welcome you to give them my phone number, my email, email address. I would love to converse with them. And if I could plead my case to them, I would love to do that.
Okay. That's all I have.
Ms. Scott, let's reel this in, okay? We've been talking about this for about an hour and two minutes.
I only have one more question and this would go from Air Pro. Tim Winger and Mr. McCormick, Alderman McCormick. Is approximately 20 days ago, we voted on a budget and this was in it? So I'm just curious why it's suddenly back now for rediscussion when we just approved it approximately 20 days ago?
Well, I think, I think the primary reason is because you beat us about the head and shoulders so badly with the, with the number 20. And I think this provides the flexibility for the council. Not now perhaps, because I don't think I would vote to reduce it, but, but at some point, the council may decide to make a change. And this doesn't do anything to change the size of our current fire department. What's here is just changing the language in the, in the ordinance and statute. So I would, I could, I could still support this and be opposed to reducing the force in the fire department. And even vote in favor if it, if it came up of, of the, of the assistant chief. And as you pointed out, it's already been voted on.
It has, but it doesn't, once you get rid of that number 20, next council meeting, it can come right up to drop it down to 18, 16, whatever council wants.
Any council can do that anyway. Any council can do whatever the council feels like.
Once the number is changed, they can.
Yeah, they can make a change.
That's why I suppose changing the number.
Ms. McLenn, can we reel this?
Yes, because I'd like to hear from the citizens, but Ms. Winger, you can mischaracterize. Chief Dover did not come back insisting that we have an assistant fire chief. As a matter of fact, he had met with Mr. Rapley. They had discussed that that was money that was available potentially for the surplus for next year's budget. And it was brought up that we have an ordinance that requires 20 people. And so that was not Chief Dover advocating at that, at the budget meeting. That was me advocating for us following our city ordinances that we have.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. What is so magical about the number 20?
I am not real sure, sir. For me, I feel very comfortable with having six firefighters on shift and the addition of the assistant chief. I, I'm comfortable with that, that number. I think in a perfect world, we might have 23, 26, I mean, but I, I would highly recommend our, not. I would never recommend reducing our staffing any less than what we are at right now. It wouldn't be safe. It wouldn't be.
Well, we're at 19 right now.
Correct. I would never recommend.
You're comfortable with 19?
I'm comfortable with 20.
Okay.
Citizens.
There is no one signed up to speak on item three.
Mr. Mayor, there are hands up.
Well, who's hands up? Oh, Mr. Blaine, you weren't here when they signed up, so go ahead. That's okay, maybe, you know, I've been known to make a mistake. I know that's hard to believe, but.
Sure, appreciate the opportunity to be heard.
Yes, sir, thank you.
My name is Jeremy Blaine.
Jeremy Blaine, you did sign up. My apologies, sir.
All right, so we're legal?
We're legal. Thank you so much.
Good. I live at 104 Iron Gate Road. I'm a citizen and resident of Castle Hills for the last three years and an active voter. So I'd like to thank Chief Dover and his team for all they do. It's an excellent job. And I think that having an assistant fire chief is a prudent, reasonable and cost effective way to ensure the safety of all of our citizens. We've had two major fires on my street or just around the block in the last year. Both houses are, you know, have been unoccupied since. So I know that there's definitely a need for the fire part of the, of the job as well as the, the other vehicle rescues and other things that have been talked about today. I think the risks of not having properly trained leadership to include an assistant fire chief in a crisis and emergencies that ensures command and control and essential continuity operations is a major risk that is not one that we should really take lightly or, you know, really consider in terms of, you know, budgetary constraints. The city is growing, maybe in, in small amounts, but as was stated, the Wedgwood is coming back. I think there's continual drives to bring new businesses, new families, you know, families such as mine that are, that are newer residents. In the last couple of years, we're trying to bring our neighbors and friends in as well to, you know, reestablish the tax base and continue to grow because it is a great community. So I think we really should start focusing and building for growth. Think of this position and some of the others on the city services side as investments. I would like to applaud the city council for being good stewards of our tax dollars, my tax dollars. I think that's the appropriate job is to ask the tough questions of the city services, the professionals, make sure that they're applying their professionalism, their knowledge to everything that they do and making good use of our dollars and protecting us as well. But I think in the cases of life, safety and health, that the costs vastly outweigh the risks. And I think the cost of, you know, $75,000 for a fire chief is, is a reasonable investment in ensuring that the safety of our citizens, neighbors, family and friends is appropriately cared for over the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. It looks like we have a motion and a second on the table. Is that correct? Is that where we're at? Okay, is, and let's see what that. It does require possible action and amending this, nope. So it does require possible action. So did anyone want to make action as far as a, an amendment to that? Mark?
Mr. Mayor.
Hang on.
I haven't heard anything other than the motion made by Mr. McCormick and the second by Ms. Winger and the discussion and the citizens' comments. And of course, Chief Dover.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we retain the ordinance that we have on the books and that we reject the ordinance that's in front of us.
We have a motion on the table. Do I have a second for that?
Mr. Mayor, that's two things. That's two different motions.
Okay.
Okay, so in that case, I will, basically, my motion would be to maintain the ordinance that we have on the books, the way it's written.
That's not the motion we had before. That's not the ordinance we have.
Well, the act, it's possible action. It doesn't say what the action is. Do you read that in, oh, to delete. You're exactly right. There's a motion on the table to delete the assistant fire chief position.
Okay. Then I would like to amend the motion to add back in the assistant fire chief and the number of 20 on staff, how that was written. It was at least 20 regular or full paid positions.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Two motions pending, Mr. Mayor.
Now, we have a one motion pending.
And we have, we already have a motion to pass the ordinance that we have.
Yes, sir.
If we, if we don't pass the ordinance that we have, the result is exactly what Ms. McLenn wants. Isn't that right, Ms. McLenn?
That would be the result.
Okay, so we don't need another motion for it. All we need to do is have a vote on this thing and if it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, the current ordinance stays in place. Right? Isn't that correct, Mr.?
You're exactly right, Mr. McCormick. Okay. So we have a motion on the table as read by Mr. McCormick. Let's make sure we got it right. Mini, what do you have over there?
The motion is by Mr. Skip McCormick and seconded by Ms. Winger to amend section 1824 of chapter 18, Fire Prevention and Protection, to remove the number of required firefighters' positions and to make the position of assistant fire chief optional.
Thank you. All right, this will be it.
Point of order, that's not what's on the agenda.
Well, that's all, that's what's in the ordinance that's being proposed because that's attached to it.
Call for the vote.
Hang on. We have a point of order. Mark, did you, I think you already agreed with the fact because of the typographical of the difference is what's stated on the agenda and was actually in the packet changed. And I believe Mr. McCormick did change that to, to amend the agenda.
Actually, that was a change by the, by the city attorney, but that's fine. What we got here is what I described.
Okay.
It's my view that the wording in the, in ordinance number 2018-10-09-A is consistent with the agenda item. Therefore, I think that the motion to, to adopt ordinance 2018-10-09-A is an appropriate motion for the council's consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question of Mr. Schnall. I don't, I have a question for the city attorney.
Go ahead.
I think when we call for the vote, we take the vote. We've had this discussion for some time.
I have a question for the city attorney.
But you had an opportunity to ask questions.
Ms. Winger, excuse me. I think that removing the number of required firefighter positions is a pretty substantial difference than just deleting the need for an assistant fire chief. That opens up every single position in the fire department. Assistant fire chief, yes or no?
This, Mayor, that's not a question for the, for the city attorney. That's a statement.
It is. I think, sitting up here making a decision, that that is a substantial change and so.
Let's.
The, the wording on your agenda is delete the assistant fire chief position and adjust section 18-24 regular firefighter positions. I think that the ordinance 2018-10-09-A does that.
Okay, thank you.
By making the fire, the assistant fire chief position optional, so deleting it as a mandatory position and then adjusting the regular firefighter positions by removing the word 20.
Okay.
I think it meets the word, the agenda language is complied with in the terms of the ordinances before the council.
I want to make sure council knows what they're voting for. Is a yes vote to remove the assistant?
Yes vote is to adopt the new language at the bottom of the first page of proposed ordinance 2018-10-09-A, the effect of which is to remove the word 20 and to make the assistant fire chief position optional.
Mr. McCormick? Roll call.
No.
No. No. Aye.
No.
Okay. Four to one, thank you, council. Let's move on. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item four, discussion and possible action of ordinance number 201A-1009B, amending chapter 26, nuisances to create article six establishing the declaration of nuisance generating properties. Appellate procedures, registration and bond regulations and civil and criminal penalties. Wow. Mr. McCormick and Ms. Winger.
Well, I make a.
Actually, Mayor, this should be a staff item.
Yeah, it's not, it's not correct. We didn't put it on here.
Yes, this is a staff item and it kind of started as, and incepted from staff, so it should read my name by the item as staff submitted from that standpoint.
That's fine, go ahead, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance amends chapter 26 of nuisances. This allows for the declaration of nuisance generating properties, providing additional tools for the city to work more effectively to address continuous or persistent violations of city codes, including nuisance calls to police, fire and code compliance departments. This was actually, the ordinance was drafted by our city prosecutor in working with our code enforcement officer and our police chief on matters related to potential nuisances. The review and, and the need for amending this nuisance code will allow for more effective enforcement, making the code more efficient. The common violations that, that they've reviewed and would follow under this nuisance ordinance would be high weed, grass, trash, debris, trash containers, noise and parking. Many of these violations are occurring at short-term rental properties, which is creating some undue hardship on surrounding neighbors. So in, in our discussion with staff and putting this together, there was thoughts of bringing this to the prior, to an August meeting. But since we changed city attorneys, we needed to push this to the October meeting for Mr. Schnall and Mr. Fletcher's review. And this was actually pushed from a council member's standpoint by Ms. Scott. I can allow her to elaborate on some of the meetings she's had with residents regarding this item.
Ms. Scott?
May I move first to accept this item?
Are you making a motion? Is that what you're doing?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table on item number four. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I've been contacted by a citizen that lives next door, very close to a property currently being used, rented out on Airbnb. It's, it's, it's constantly in and out of use and after having several discussions with the gentleman, he continues to call the police to come and they do what they can do. And he continues to call code compliance and they do what they can do. But in certain ways, their hands have been kind of tied as far as taking it a little bit further, having a little more teeth to these nuisances because they're continuous and they're constant. And so after speaking with the resident and going to our city manager, and he informed me, well, we already have this that has been proposed. So I said, great, let's get it back to the city attorneys. Let's make sure that everything's in here is legal and follows the law, but also allows our citizens that are living in proximity to properties that are constantly creating a nuisance of themselves to actually have some recourse in getting that taken care of. So that's kind of how this came about. It was in the works and then it kind of caught put on the back burner, but due to citizens, a citizen coming to me and speaking with me multiple times about their issues, I really was glad that staff was able to put it together and get it on the books for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
On the agenda for tonight.
Say that again.
Not on the books tonight, on the agenda for tonight, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the table. I guess we're at this point, we're in discussion. Traditionally, we start with Mr. McCormick, but I think it's a change. Douglas, you have anything to say? Or do you want to pass and come back?
Well, I'm a little confused when it says council is seeking to efficiently reduce the number of reoccurring nuisance violations. This will reduce the number of violations or add to the number of violations?
Are you asking me, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, please.
Oh, it, it should reduce the number because now they can have an unlimited number of nuisance calls. Oh, it, it should reduce the number because now they can have an unlimited number of nuisance calls. But now we're limiting after three nuisance-generating violations within 60 days or seven nuisance-generating violations within a 12-month period. Um, they, there's now procedure in place that they can actually be defined as a nuisance property. There is plenty of, um, opportunity if, uh, once they're, uh, our code enforcement officer, allows the property owner to know that they are being considered a nuisance property. They do have recourse to appeal. Um, but after it's all said and done, and a decision is made, and that property is declared a nuisance property, then they would have to register the property and submit a $2,000 bond to the city. So it actually allows, um, some recourse to these constant nuisance complaints that are coming from the same addresses over and over again. They would only be considered a nuisance property for a year before, as long as they didn't continue to gather, um, more complaints against them. And it also gives some teeth to, once they are a registered nuisance property, then fines can be, um, assessed and civil penalties can be, um, brought forth to the property and the property owner. So the point is to make them no longer a nuisance property by having procedures in place that give them reason to stop with fines.
Well, I, I, I find this really interesting because it's seven pages. Where did you, did you come up with this verbiage, or were you able to find a similar municipality that had this?
No, sir. Um, Mr. Schnall, I believe, was the one that came up with this.
Uh, this ordinance was originally drafted by Mr. Ryan Henry. As Mr. Rapley said, the city tasked the city prosecutor, one of the city prosecutors, um, with preparing this proposed ordinance. Um, after I saw it, I made a number of changes to it to streamline it a little bit and, in my judgment, to make it more compliant with the terms of the local government code in terms of the enforcement mechanisms. Um, you know, I certainly agree with what Ms. Scott said, that, um, a, a property owner facing a fine of $500 per day with each day being a separate violation is more likely to bring his or her property into compliance, whether it's a matter of, of weeds or it's a matter of irresponsible tenants.
Ms. Winger?
Captain Suniga, since you're here. I assume you feel that this will help the police department do its job better?
Counsel? Uh, absolutely. Um, if we have some, some sort of clarification, uh, in reference, uh, to this type of business, it would assist us in addressing the issue when we get called out.
Okay, and, and I, I just want to say, this is not to put anybody down, but I have talked to the chief about this, and I think that, you know, a little bit more, I don't want to say training, because you guys got plenty of training, but a little more clarification to the officers who are going out there because we, part of what engendered this is we have had quite a number of complaints from one property, as you know. And the last time this occurred, there were three separate calls. The police department, for some reason, didn't record the third one, but there is a net, you know, in the record that the officer smelled marijuana, and yet they did nothing about it. So I'm, I'm, I'm not asking you to respond to that now, I'm just saying that, you know, once we have this there, I expect people to actually enforce it.
Well, that's correct. I mean, we, as long as we have something to work with. Uh, right now, we're just going with and enforcing what we can as far as the laws and, and what we see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
I, I, is it okay? I have, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, uh, would, would the smell of marijuana smoke qualify as a noxious odor emanating from the property?
Probable cause.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, it just depends on the circumstances that are present at the time. I can't speak as to what occurred that night.
Oh, I'm not talking about that night. I'm just, I'm just saying, one of the things in here, um, that's listed is if there is a noxious odor emanating from the property which interferes with a residential property's owner's use and enjoyment of their property. So if you have someone next door in copious amounts of marijuana smoke or is going over the fence, would that be considered a noxious odor?
It could be, yes, ma'am. And, and again, the officers would go out and investigate and determine, uh, what action could be taken at that time.
Okay, that, that's, I was just curious because that had been mentioned. I know there is a right to privacy of what people are doing in their own yard, but if the noxious odor, that sort of thing. That's why I was curious about the wording there. Thank you, sir.
Um, Ms. McLenn?
I can think of numerous situations that citizens have brought to, brought to our attention to this council, to prior councils, which have been, would have been greatly assisted by having a nuisance ordinance like this on the books. With the civil penalty that is in here, I feel like we will have a very effective tool to obtain compliance quicker, and we've given our city, our, our police, everyone from code enforcement to the police to our municipal court judge, the tools that they need to be able to handle our citizens and provide more assistance to them in situations that become truly, I mean, a nuisance. So, um, thank you, Mr. Rapley, for bringing this back to the table. And hopefully, this will begin a, a period of time where we are able to really help residents who have these situations in their vicinity.
Ms. McLenn, did you, uh, Ms. Scott, did you have any, uh, more to add? Mr. McCormick?
I have a question for Mr. Schnall. On page seven, Mr. Schnall, under criminal enforcement. It's all up.
Oh, should we evacuate?
Okay.
Mr. McCormick, there's a typographical error. There's a period where there's supposed to be a comma on the third line. I've already called that to Mr. Rapley's attention. And I would ask, um, Ms. Scott and Ms. Winger to agree to amend the motion to change the, uh, statement "more than $2" to "more than $2,000." It's just a period instead of a comma, and I frankly can't tell you whether it was something that Mr. Ryan Henry did or I did, but I'll take responsibility for it, and we can fix it by a simple amendment to the motion to substitute the number.
I would gladly amend the motion to change that from $2 to $2,000.
Second.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Hang on just a second here.
Mr. Schnall, you're guilty so-and-so. That wasn't what I was going to talk about.
Well, I'm glad we got it corrected anyway, Mr. McCormick.
Yeah, so, so line, line, two lines below that where it says, "All mental intent requirements are hereby disclaimed." I'd like a little bit of explanation on that one, if you don't mind.
Uh, that really is designed, because in most, in, in many instances, a criminal conduct is dependent on it being done knowingly. And this sentence is something that Mr. Ryan Henry feels very strongly about. He and I, in fact, have discussed this kind of a sentence in the context of an ordinance on a completely different subject in a completely, completely different city. And he feels real strongly about having this sentence in our ordinance in order to make it easier for the police department to enforce it. I think it comes right back to the question that was just asked about, you know, is the smell of marijuana permeating across a, a boundary line, um, onto another person's property, a, a noxious odor? And the question would be, well, you know, the person could say, "Well, I didn't know that my smoking marijuana was going to emanate to my neighbor and bother my neighbor." This sentence essentially means that whether the, the person knew or that, that it was going to be a problem for a neighbor or not, it's still a violation.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is the mens rea that's required for a criminal charge. And this, this, I don't believe negates the requirement for a criminal mens rea when a criminal, when a criminal event takes place. I think it, it just disclaims the knowledge of collateral damage that might occur from that. Is that what, is that's what this gets to?
I'm, I'm fine with that explanation as well.
I'm sorry. Tell me again.
I'm fine with your explanation as well.
Okay, if that's what it means, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Was there anybody else? I, I have a question for Mark, but Leslie, go ahead, please.